The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
I'd like to call a special board meeting to order. We will start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that?
Good evening. Becker. McCoy.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Sit Nakow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Brandon Hubel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. I would look for a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically to wit, the future location for John Dewey Academy of Learning and the Northeast Wisconsin Innovation School.
Sir, second?
Second.
Beth?
Thank you. Brandon Hubel.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Sit Nakow.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Past seven zero, we will head over to closed session. See you at six. Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I'd like to entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Beth, if you could help us here?
Smith.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Brandon Hubel.
Hi.
Sit Nakow.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Past seven zero. I'd like to just point out, we took roll called at five o'clock before going into closed session. All seven board members were present, but tonight we're also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly along with members of his cabinet. We also have with us two members of the inner city student council, President Noah Becker, and Aiden Gervais, both from Green Bay West High School. Thank you guys for joining us tonight. First thing on our agenda is the open forum. We have a number of people who are registered, both to receive phone calls and have statements that are read. So Josh, if you'd be able to help me with that, we'll go through the phone calls first. So let you do your thing. Jeremy, can you hear me? Jeremy, are you there?
I am.
Thank you very much for calling. This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to give your comments to the board.
Okay, Jeremy Holm. My address is twenty seven zero six Inesta Drive. So I'm here to, you know, discuss our high school athletics going forward during this pandemic. Really background on me, I work in our local health system, so I truly can attest to the importance of our founding guidelines to combat this pandemic. But if one thing I can attest to is healthcare is proving that we can, we do a really good job at what we do by following the rules and doing what we can. We, in our health society work in, we've done a great job with this by following our rules. So I think it can be done for the sake of our kids in school for athletics and everything. So to that point, it'd be nice to figure a way to bring some sense of normalcy to our children during this pandemic. The psychological impact that I've seen, whether it's my son and other kids with everything, it's been a, it's huge on these kids with their lack of activities. And I'm not just talking activities being sports. Yes, I am a huge fan of sports getting active again. But even the kids who are in band and orchestra and dance and everything, I mean, that's part of high school and these kids are missing on that. You can see the politics in a lot of these kids. The other thing is that we see is that, you know, Green Bay public schools, if we do consider, the system considers canceling winter sports, we already have heard of other schools around this area who are gonna be planning on having winter sports. So, you know, the Depires, West Depires, Schwab, and on Bayport, Notre Dame, some of these, what we're hearing is they're already starting their winter sports right now this week. And so then these kids of the Green Bay Public Schools who some would say, in all of them in totality can be somewhat underprivileged and now they get, they're seeing these other schools that are on the periphery getting, you know, better things on them that takes a massive toll on them as well. It's not necessarily an equal, equal fair shake for them all. So watching winter sports and our kids in the Green Bay Public Schools having to watch from a distance as other programs and other schools have are participating, that's another psychological impact to these kids. So I'm not looking at necessarily, I know the school board and everybody has talked about bringing kids back and, you know, saying, for example, Preble High School, half that student body in for a couple of days and however we do a blended model. Well, this would be a good way to bring in our student body in smaller groups. If you're able to bring in winter sports, band, orchestra, whatever the student activity is, you're bringing in small, more controlled groups that it would be a good test and a way to really see how we can make it work for the sake of these, of our children in this community and be able to have the, as much as they can get out of their high school experience as possible. The other, you know, the other piece would be is that it just gives them the opportunity to, again, to have the high school experience as much as possible. I mean, this pandemic has been a mess for everybody and I think everybody can attest to that. But I also look at if Green Bay decides to stay virtual, can we look at still looking at this model of bringing some of these kids back into school? They're still responsible for doing their schoolwork. They're still responsible for signing in their class. They're still doing school. So it's no different than a homeschool kid who's at home getting homeschooled and still being able to participate at the local high school in their sports so they can have that part of their high school experience. And then probably lastly, you know, all summer long, the basketball circuit is at tournaments all summer and there's been nothing linked indoors all summer long, nothing's been linked and traced back to any positivity coming from any of those tournaments. They've really locked it down. They have strict rules applied by it. And I think the Green Bay school system and our conference along this, in this whole area can really mandate and really knuckle things down. And I think you could, you'd have a ton of parent support to be able to help mitigate all of that and really give these kids the opportunity that, for them to be able to participate in their sports. UW Madison has done studies, which I'm sure you guys have heard, that the mental toll is taken, but also throughout the fall semester, there's not been anything pinpointed back to, say, football or anything like that. It was one run really tight. So I think it's just something that for the sake of the kids, whether it's activities or getting back into school in some way, shape, or form, I think that's just, the kids are kind of getting together in some way outside as it is now. Just not obviously in the massive groups, but they're all still kind of sprinkled in. But, you know, to get them back into that connectedness of their school community and sports and other activities would just be greatly beneficial for these kids.
Jeremy, thank you very much for sharing your comments with us. We can't respond to anyone at this time, but we do have this coming up later on in the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Yep.
Hey Eric. Eric?
Yep.
Would you reiterate why we can't respond to public speakers?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
We can let Jeremy go. Josh, you can start working on calling the next. Just as a reminder, during the public forum, we are restricted in what we can speak to at a board meeting unless it is on the agenda at that given time. And so state statute regulates that we only speak to what's on the agenda. And so when somebody calls in, we can ask follow-up questions, but we don't, we are prohibited from having discussion about it at that time. James, can you hear me? James, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. If you could start by giving us your name and address and then I'll start a timer. Five minutes for you to address the board.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah, sure. My name is Jim Sweeney. Address is sixteen hundred Oriole Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four three one one. And did you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, it's all yours.
Oh, great. Thanks. Appreciate it. So forgive me for this scripted sound, but I wrote a little thing and sent it in and I'm just gonna read off of that. But so I'm a community member and a parent to an East High School student and wish to comment on the subject of winter athletics. First, I wish to make clear that my family and I take the challenges and risks of the current pandemic very serious. And we do everything possible to limit the risk to ourselves, our families, and our communities. I do understand the heavy challenges the school board has faces with decisions these days and commend you all for the incredible work you do. I'm writing really to advocate for winter sports to move forward with safe plans in place. I do feel this, meaning safe plans, is the most important aspect of my request as I truly believe this can be done safely and would allow the student athletes to do what they love to do in a coordinated, thoughtful, and safe manner. I can speak to my son who is still competing in basketball, whether through private groups or places like the Croc Center, which I feel they're at greater risk in those venues than if coaches, parents, and students all work together to create a safe environment within the structure of the school or possibly using venues outside of the school, but as a team. I also do not, I don't necessarily think that schools being virtual and athletics starting are necessarily mutually exclusive of each other. I do feel that starting up schools is a completely different set of conditions that, you know, that, you know, require much more than, you know, athletics moving forward. Again, with a safe plan to do so and keeping the students' health priority one. I bring this point as it does appear that other school districts that are virtual are figuring out ways to make this work. Lastly, I believe that these activities are vital to the physical and mental well-being of our children and staying connected to the spirit of their schools are steps that we can begin to take while still keeping our community safe. So I appreciate your time and the consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, Jim. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
For reference, I believe we have about seven callers and seven statements so people can keep track of where we are.
Eric?
Yes.
Can you remind people that they'll be looking for an out-of-state number when the district calls them as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll do that right after Ryan. Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you for taking the time to call. This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. If you could start by giving us your name and address and then I'll start the timer. You have five minutes to address the board.
Great. My name is Ryan Martin. I live at twenty six thirty Vienna Court. I'm a psychology professor at UW Green Bay. I wanted to take a few minutes to, I guess, first thank the school board for making what I know has been a really, really difficult decision, but what is certainly the right decision to keep learning virtual during the pandemic. I think it took a lot of courage to do that and I'm thankful that you prioritize health and safety of the community. Similarly, I also want to thank all the Green Bay teachers, my kids' teachers in particular selfishly, who are some of the most impressive people I've known. What they've done over the last eight months has been extraordinary. Now, I understand that there is a push, sort of an organized push, from a lot of people in Green Bay to reopen schools now or in January or what I would consider too soon. And I think a lot of times, using the argument about mental health concerns of learning, or excuse me, virtual learning being somehow worse than COVID. And I do think, I guess I wanted to note two things. First, I wanted to note that we are absolutely in the midst of a mental health crisis right now. That is a fact and I take that very, very seriously. Like I said, I'm a counseling psychologist. But opening schools too early, in my, excuse me, I want to caution people against opening schools too early as being a solution to that crisis. As I see it, opening schools too early is only gonna make that mental health crisis worse. And I say that because going to school in a pandemic has mental health consequences too. Getting ill, infecting loved ones has mental health consequences. Constant changes from in-person to online to hybrid, having to quarantine because you came into contact with COVID positive peer, having a classmate or a teacher or a family member die or get really, really sick. Those things all have mental health consequences. I fully understand the urge to reopen and the desire to return to normal. And my heart absolutely breaks for the many families who are struggling, the kids who've missed out so much. And I've heard some really, really compelling stories tonight as I've listened to their comments. But I think that opening right now is not going to be a return to normal or opening in January is not a return to normal. I think it's guaranteed to be unsafe, both physically and psychologically. I think the best thing we can do is stay virtual until it's just truly safe to open up. So thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you very much for calling, Ryan. We appreciate it.
Bye.
So while Josh gets the next person on the line, just a reminder, if you're waiting for a call tonight, it'll come from an out-of-state number because it's through the Zoom platform. So just expect a number that's probably unfamiliar to you if you're waiting for your comments. Dimitri, can you hear me?
Hello, if you're speaking.
Thank you very much for calling. This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. You've got the entire board here present. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then I will start a five-minute timer for you to give us your comments.
Yes, my name is Uthi Maximo and I'm from inside of Green Bay. I'm an accountant.
All right, you can go ahead.
I'm sorry, with as far as the format, am I expected to read the statement or add some comments beyond the?
Yep, it's up to you. We've.
Okay.
Yeah, whichever you're more comfortable.
I guess I will. All right, I'll do me a little snapshot of the statement. Dear board, dear community members, the schools must stay closed for the foreseeable future. I think just the mere consideration of the options to open quote-unquote is ill-advised and borderline criminal. Schools were closed for a reason because we are in the midst of pandemic and that was needed to stop the community spread, save the teachers and the support staff that's numerous from being infected. I'm not even bringing up the fact that the kids will get sick and are getting sick and are in hospitals. Any loss of our vigilance before we truly can take disease under control opens the floodgate of the new infections. And as we had experienced that already, the sacrifices are moot and we have to start over again. As you have all have followed the news lately, we've got over two hundred thousand new infections nationwide in a single day and over one million in less than five days. We had over two thousand Americans dead in a single day due to coronavirus. Not because of flu, not because of people being, as they say, old. No, this is strictly coronavirus effect. I think we need to open more hospital beds, not schools at this moment. Everybody needs to top it out, wear masks, and avoid any gatherings. The pure logic of this moment cannot be made any simpler. Pandemic is still here. It is progressing and killing any and all ages in our community and across the United States. Therefore, the schools must remain closed. I think the board had done correct decision earlier in the year and I think the only switch that they have in their power to open or to close, that's what allows them to save lives. I don't believe in any mitigation approaches where you have stepped up, blended type of sessions simply because that's not how infections work. Today, I would like to applaud those speaking with hot hearts but with a cold head and would like to refute those driven by agenda and inquisitiveness. In my circle, a lot more parents support closure than, and only a small minority of the misguided keep throwing nonsensical reasons to see what sticks and what will resonate with the public in their quest to somehow reopen schools again. School is not a daycare. School is a place where kids, as a society, together learn from each other and from teachers. But the infection works in such a way that everybody contacts with everybody. At the end, lives are lost. If anybody is willing to take that responsibility, they should step up, front and say so and carry that responsibility all the way. Some people treat virtual school as a given. It is not. I was surprised we didn't have that. We'd like it to have it. A school we're going into, teachers are doing tremendous job. I think the best that they can do, they're doing that and doing above. All of the negative statistics, quote-unquote, that were provided by some members, failing grades, inconsistent attendance, emotional toll, all of that really rests with this family. I myself sit down with my children every night and on the weekend, we keep track of schoolwork, assignments. Women of teachers, these are my children, and the onus is on parents to keep up with the education, not carry it over onto the school. I think this conversation would have started and ended with one of the comments I saw regarding the proud carpool of four thirteen-year-olds. This is exactly why we cannot go back to mixed or open school simply because there will be people, parents, that just don't care as far as what, how their actions will affect everybody else in that classroom. There are calls to medic neighboring districts. Please take it with a big grain of salt. Those districts are not indicators of anything. Exactly the size and diversity of Green Bay District versus smaller, compact, homogeneous districts makes a big play in here. We're dealing with different behaviors, different classes of people, if you wish. I think also a few things that were spoken about, or will be, the virus is here to stay and there doesn't seem to be an indication that the cases are going to go away. That's a lie.
Dimitri, could I interrupt? I'm sorry. That was the five minutes. I apologize.
All right. Thank you for your attention.
Yep, thank you for the comments.
Yes, bye.
Jennifer, can you hear me?
No, it's okay.
Can you hear me, Jennifer?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, this is Eric.
Hi, Eric. How are you?
Good, good. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, thank you. This is Jennifer Garner and I live at seven eighteen Dalzment in Green Bay and that's code five four three oh three. And I won't need five minutes, but thank you so much for providing me the chance to acknowledge the tremendous accomplishment of my dear friend Lori and her selection as Communicator of the Year by her peers. You know, communications is the lifeblood that runs through the operation of any organization. And to help these efforts at the fourth largest district in the state requires extraordinary skill, wisdom, and patience. And with over twenty-one thousand kids, three thousand plus staff, forty-two schools, and dozens of community partnerships, there's no part of this district that is untouched by Lori and her staff. And while I know and appreciate the big picture work she performs twenty-four seven on behalf of the district, what touches me the most as a grandparent of a Jackson Elementary School Jaguar is her compassion and commitment to every child who enters the proverbial schoolhouse door in our city. On behalf of the fourth grader in my family and all of the children and families whose lives you touch every single day, Lori, thank you.
Thank you very much for calling.
I beg your pardon?
Oh, I was just saying, thank you very much for calling.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you too.
Hi Denise, can you hear me?
Oh, thank you very much for calling.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Denise, can you hear me?
I can.
This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. If you could start by introducing yourself and then giving us your address and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Hi, I'm Denise Gummer-Hutchison. I live at thirty-one eighty-four Herman's Road.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Denise, that's the echo, so the sound that you have in the background.
I can.
This is Eric Van Nuvo with the Green Bay School Board. If you could start by introducing yourself and then.
Denise, turn down the sound on your computer.
Will do. Hi, I'm Denise Gummer-Hutchison. I live at thirty-one eighty-four Herman's Road. Yeah.
Denise, that's the echo, so the sound that you have in the background.
Sorry, you guys.
That's all right.
So you guys know who I am. Thirty-one eighty-four Herman's Road, New Franken, Wisconsin. And I'm here to acknowledge and congratulate Lori Blakesley on her outstanding award and it's extremely well-deserved. I've had the honor and privilege of working with Lori in different situations for the last twenty-two years. And what's really phenomenal to me is to think about what we were able to accomplish with the referendums for the school district. And the fact that because of the hard work that Lori put into those referendums and the last one specifically, we were able to present on a national level so that other school districts around the country would have an opportunity to benefit from Lori's knowledge and her skills and the outstanding offering that she has to the school district in Green Bay, but also on a national level with regards to communications for a school district. So that's all I really wanted to say is congratulations to all of you as a board to have the privilege of working, having Lori work for you guys and the real value that she brings to the children and the families and extensively to our community with her amazing skills and values. So thanks a lot, you guys, and thanks for all your hard work and I really enjoy the opportunity. And I really enjoy the opportunity to be a member of this community and watch the good work that you're able to accomplish. So thank you. Bye.
Thanks for calling, Denise. Josh, do we have one more call?
One last call, yes.
Michelle, can you hear me? Michelle, are you there?
I am.
Thank you very much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself, I don't know if you need an introduction, but you could introduce yourself, give us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure, thank you. I am happy to introduce myself. I'm Michelle Langenfeld, twenty-nine hundred Shelton Creek Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And tonight I am calling President Vanonville, Vice President Shelton, members of the board, and Superintendent Murley to give a shout out and congratulations to the twenty-twenty PRSA Communicator of the Year from Northeast Wisconsin, Lori Blakesley, the Director of Communications in Green Bay Public Schools. You know, Lori's really deserving of this award, and I think we can all remember those first few days of the pandemic when people really needed to have a calm, accurate, and helpful, ongoing communication stream because people were extremely, extremely nervous about what was happening, and we all joined her in that. But Lori's insight, her experience, her expertise, her inclusive approach to communication, acknowledging the importance of serving all members of our community, just went into high gear. And her insights were invaluable at the time. And I think it was really no surprise that her neighboring districts uh actually nominated her for this because she has been a leader out in front, not only for the pandemic, but also as was just referenced, um, the referendum. And I think what really sets Lori apart is that she really has the ability to take very complex issues such as the budget, referendum, strategic plans, and communicate them out through well-understood ways, like infographs and, and very specific, just real pointed messages. And I think one of the other important pieces I just wanted to share is that the work continued during the pandemic. And one of the things that Lori and her team started last fall was to improve customer service and to really recognize and honor staff for their extraordinary work. And it was called the Extra Mile Exceptional Customer Service Award, recognizing staff who went above and beyond to provide that exceptional customer service. So even during the pandemic, that work continued. Lori continued it virtually and made sure that the recipients were honored and not only received the virtual recognition, but also on the district Facebook website. So as I think about Lori and some of the work that she does, a lot of people aren't even aware that she served on point to place seven, successfully seven unique virtual graduations, making sure the billboards were there and the bridges were lit and everybody knew what was happening. She also works tirelessly on behalf of numerous community committees. And you'll see her branding on a number of things such as turbocharge for college credits. And most recently, she was one of the driving forces behind the Green Bay Area Public Schools Education Foundation. So regardless of what she and her team are handed every day, she manages it well. Whether it's a crisis such as the Preble fire, day-to-day events and celebrations, Lori and her team are always there, ready to work, ready to roll up their sleeves and do the very, very best communication they can to provide the community with the most up-to-date information via multiple modalities and multiple languages. So I just want to congratulate you, Lori, on this most prestigious award from your colleagues. You are most deserving. And also congratulations to the Green Bay Area Public Schools to have someone on the team who can communicate your needs and also your successes. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to call, Michelle.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, and thank you all for your service to our community.
All right. Well, certainly, congratulations to Lori for that prestigious award. Very thankful to have you on our team. Um, all right, with that said, we have, I believe, seven comments that have been submitted that asked to be read. Um, Melissa, are you going to help us with that?
I am going to read.
Okay.
Okay, the first comment is from Jennifer Sidinski. Her address is twenty-six forty-five Seneca Court. And the subject is equity and opportunity. Eric, this is a kind of long one, so you might have to cut me off in five minutes.
Yep.
Okay. I am a proud alumni and current parent of students who attend Green Bay Southwest. I have a long history of feeling proud of our community of learning. When faced with the choice to keep my children enrolled in the district where they were attending elementary school where I teach, am a school counselor, or move them to our home district, I easily chose Green Bay because of its progressive practices, diverse population, history of excellence, and the perceived opportunities they would be afforded by making the switch. In fact, GBAP's mission made it a choice that wasn't second-guessed at the time. Engagement, equity, excellence. Unfortunately, twenty-twenty threw us a curveball that wasn't expected. I had faith and hope that our district would creatively find a way to continue to meet this mission. Unfortunately, I find myself disheartened, frustrated, sad, and angry as I wonder how well our district is reaching these visionary goals since schools have been one hundred percent virtual since March. Engagement is at an all-time low as evidenced by the rising number of students who are earning failing grades, inconsistently attending virtual classroom sessions, and attending robotically, just going through the motions without authentic, reciprocal, ongoing communication with their teachers and classmates. Cameras and microphones are often turned off, and extra credit is something being offered to students for turning them on and saying something. As a teacher, I know those learning behaviors of being present, attentively listening, and participating to be part of what we are able to do with kids in person. It just happens naturally. That said, this is evidence that virtual learning cannot replicate the engagement that naturally happens when students are in person, learning with their teachers and peers. Despite the wonderful ways every teacher I know is striving to meet their students' learning needs at this time through interactive software, learning platforms, games, and add-ons, the engagement is just not the same. It's certainly not for the lack of effort or trying. My daughter's teachers have been nothing short of amazing. It is just that virtual learning cannot replicate in-person learning. Equity in education is a measure of achievement, fairness, and opportunity. What sort of fairness currently exists for GBAP students? Students in the majority of our neighboring districts are being offered in-person instruction where they are making real-life connections with teachers who are able to hold them accountable to high learning standards. Those students are able to access meaningful content being delivered with relevance, rigor, and a significant relationship, and having extracurricular athletic opportunities afforded them. Several districts, although on hybrid cohort models are one hundred percent virtual, are still offering athletic opportunities as a way to keep the social, emotional, physical health of students in check. Our children are being afforded significantly less than others as they have access to none of these opportunities right now. This is an injustice, an injustice to every GBAP student. The achievement gaps for our students academically, socially, emotionally, and physically, athletically, are widening instead of narrowing at this time. We can ameliorate these inequities that currently exist by getting back to offering in-person learning. Excellence is defined as the quality of being extremely good. Due to the nature of limited engagement and difficulties learners are having with regard to screen time, brain drain, and Wi-Fi access, many GBAP teachers are being asked by their administration to pare down, simplify, and make things easier for students who are struggling to engage. Additionally, there are many inconsistencies across district schools with regard to grading policies, formative and summative assessments, and students workload. Students and parents are frustrated because the standard of excellence is inconsistent in getting or, and/or getting watered down. Ironically, these situations are the opposite of excellence. If students were in person, the expectation of excellence wouldn't be in question. It would simply be a standard that could be upheld. Mental wellness for our students is deteriorating while anxiety, stress, isolation, and hopelessness are growing. Our diverse population of learners already has factors that many of them at risk and that make many of them at risk and disenfranchised. For many of our students, the only guaranteed meal for the day is at their school. For many of our students, the only guaranteed safe place for them is at their school. For many of our students, the only place where they can make healthy connections with others and step away from screen time is at their school. I cannot understand why our district is not making an attempt to have at least some in-person learning to mitigate these risks for their long-term learning, health, and well-being. I teach in a neighboring district that has been open since September first. I am face-to-face in person, teaching five days a week.
Melissa, that's five minutes.
Okay. I believe you have the rest of it, so you can read your.
Yep.
Okay. I just need a drink. Hang on. Okay, the next individual is Rick Konop, K-O-N-O-P. He lives at twenty-seven ninety-nine Aloe Avenue in Green Bay. And his subject is stay the course. First of all, thank you to the school board for your dedication to our children's education and health. I know you are under pressure from a small group of people, including some board members, to return to some variant of in-person learning. To what benefit and at what cost? As we sit today, we are in the absolute worst position to return in any way to in-person learning. Virtually, each and every day, we see the number of infections reach a record number. And now is the time to return. Many proponents of a return point to the lack of social interaction. Frankly, I believe that those who feel that the risk is minimal and having twenty-five-plus students in a small classroom would arguably see no risk in having their children play with their friends and are probably allowing them to do so today. It is not about social interaction. Unfortunately, political agendas are at play here. As was discussed in the past school board meetings, the subject of adjusting the grading criteria is another way people are trying to rush children back to the classroom. I find this to be puzzling. Why would anyone consider changing the process to make it easier to return? The adjustment gating numbers do not minimize the risk. To me, it's akin to changing the criteria needed to earn honors simply to allow more kids to achieve honors. The standard to return to school should be based on medical science. To change the gating simply increases the risk of illness or death. My son is a senior at Preble and a member of the football and golf teams. I would love for him to be back at school. Senior year is a special time for a child, and memories made can last a lifetime. What about the potential to have your strongest memory of your senior year to be the loss of a classmate due to the virus? Why? Because someone decided that if the infection rate were only five, ten, or thirty percent, and against the advice of medical professionals, send the children back to school. I will close with this. You have done an excellent job in dealing with something that is virtually unprecedented and have it every step of the way, sided with science in keeping your kids safe. The change in the school, in the way schools being taught online from last year to this year is absolutely incredible. The school board, school administrators, teachers, and students have taken a very significant and negative situation and have surpassed any reasonable expectations and helped our children to flourish. Regardless of what the Facebook group Open Green Bay Public, Green Bay Area Public Schools is promoting, now is not the time to return in class learning. Please prepare for an onslaught of emails from members of this group, but also understand that this is a vocal minority and the vast amount of parents appreciate what you're doing and support you one hundred percent. I ask you to stay the course. Sincerely, Rick Konop. I need one second. I'm sorry. This next statement is from Scott Hanson, twenty-fifty Sandalwood Court. And this subject is in-person learning. To the Green Bay Area Public School Board, these comments are made for the purpose of supporting the immediate and broad implementation of in-person education options for all students in the Green Bay Area Public Schools district. The following data is offered. As reported in October twenty-seventeen by Susan Denarski, Professor of Public Policy, Education, and Economics at the University of Michigan, quote, "Online students do substantially worse than students in the same face-to-face course. They earn lower grades, were less likely to succeed in subsequent courses, and more likely to drop out," unquote. As reported in August twenty-twenty by Alice Poole, Professor of Child Health Policy, Chief of Medicine, Pediatrics, and Director of the UCLA Center of Excellence in Maternal and Child Health, quote, "The disruption of virtual school is increasing the risk this generation of children will offer from and die of heart disease and diabetes. It could reduce their lifelong earning potential and cripple their mental health. Forming healthy social and physical habits and promoting a love of learning are vital processes for school-aged children that are integrally associated with lower chronic disease burden, higher economic earnings, and increased overall life satisfaction. And every day out of school is taking these things away from the children and the society," unquote. The CDC continues to present the following on its website, quote, "Of key significance, in-person learning is in the best interest of students when compared to virtual learning. Application and adherence to mitigation measures provided in this document and similar to those implemented at essential workplaces can help schools reopen and stay open safely for in-person learning," unquote. As reported in the New York Times, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty, data from random testing in the United States and Britain showed schools do not seem to be furthering community transmission of coronavirus. To the, the current design for Wednesday is pure twenty percent loss of educational opportunity. The need to have no virtual instruction on Wednesday to support issues caused by online education is evident enough that virtual learning is costing our children twenty percent of their education. The Wisconsin Virtual Academy already exists for students who need online learning for any reason. For these reasons, I urge the school board to reconsider the current proposal for limited in-person education for some of the grade levels. It is imperative that we stop sacrificing our children's education, mental health, and future livelihood. Please implement an in-person learning option for all students no later than the second semester of this academic year." The next is Greta Hansen, and her address is twenty-fifty Sandalwood Court, Green Bay. And her subject is in-person learning. My name is Greta Hansen. I'm a junior at Southwest, president of the Junior Class Student Council, and a member, and a member of the Green Bay's Inner City Student Council. I am writing on behalf of my fellow classmates and myself in favor of all students being included for an in-person option. It has been almost nine months since we have been in contact with classmates and teachers outside of a screen. We are well aware of the seriousness of COVID-nineteen and need to act responsibly to protect ourselves and others, so it is frustrating and unfair that we are the group being left out of the newly proposed hybrid model. We are very capable of following the rules to decrease transmission, perhaps more so than elementary students, yet we are looked upon as if we already did something wrong. We haven't. We want to be back, just like all the other districts, but the proposed model, we are not given the chance. We are not getting the same learning opportunity or volume with this totally virtual four-day-per-week schedule as we would in person or even hybrid. Teachers offer discussion periods during these Wednesdays, but it is not the same as a designated full learning day. Many activities we do normally, such as labs or in-group projects, are impossible to replicate in an online platform. I am grateful for my teachers, and I understand that they are doing their best, but with their online learning, each day fewer kids sign in, more drop out of class early, more opt not to participate. This is discouraging to the teacher and also to the class. There is more and more talk of kids not caring because they hate learning like this and are so far behind, they don't think it, they think it doesn't matter. Please give us a chance. How is it fair to discount five grade levels in the revised hybrid model? I used to love going to school and learning, but each day logging onto the Zoom call feels less rewarding. Middle and high school are hard enough without being overlooked by the board and administration. Please allow all Green Bay students the opportunity for in-person learning. The next is Leah Berkstrom, and her address is twenty-four ninety-one Crystal Springs Drive. And her subject is return to school. I am writing to you all looking for an update on the return to school for our GBAP students. I am optimistic that work is still being done to work towards getting our kids back in school where. I am optimistic that work is still being done to work towards getting our kids back in school where they need to be. I am hopeful that you are looking at the science and at updates being released by the CDC to keep kids in school. There is evidence that supports the need for children to be in in-person school for their mental, emotional, and social well-being. There is also the fact that our children are falling behind academically, but you offer some transparency into my questions below. Who has reached out from the board or from the administrative leadership team to the schools locally that are successfully meeting in person? West, DePere, Luxembourg, Denmark. What have they learned that they could share with us? Social distancing measures, calendar adjustments, class adjustments, et cetera. If New York City schools found a way to get kids back in the classroom, so can the Green Bay district. What has been done in our current classrooms to get prepared for a return to in-person school? What extra PPE has been procured to meet the needs of the students and teachers once they return? What needs are there for families to help with? Has the gating criteria been reevaluated? Even with a vaccine, the current gating criteria will not allow for many opportunities to return to the classroom in full capacity this year and possibly never. If you were to use the gating criteria in relation to influenza with vaccine usage, you would find the same thing. Minimal opportunity to return to school. Some local districts have reevaluated the gating criteria to make it more realistic. DePere has adopted the 600 per 100,000 model in a two-week period. Has the union continued to exert pressure as they had in July and August? It is important to note that the teachers have their union, but the students have you as a board members. I hope we can agree that this is a nonpartisan issue and the union should be pressuring these decisions. Other sectors, industries are back to work and are doing it in a safe manner. For schools that have to be open, it has been shown that schools aren't spreading the virus. Thank you for basing your decision and decisions off of what is best for the emotional, mental, and academic well-being of our children. Recently, I drove a carpool for four 13-year-old boys, and they were chatting about their disappointment about not being in school. They were frustrated with not being able to build things in tech ed. They were brainstorming ways in which to drop the class. Then they turned the conversation around and discussed how they could meet in small groups with their teacher, maybe only 10 at a time, and wearing masks. But he had still get to go in a few times a week to build things. I found their ingenuity applaudable and wanted to pass this story along. Please keep looking at new ways to address the needs of our youth. They are giving up and neither should be. Okay, the next is by Brian and Melissa, and I'm gonna butcher the last name, Hyatt Leskey.
Leskey.
Leskey, thank you. And the address is 1600 Arabian Drive in Green Bay. The subject is the start of winter athletics for all Green Bay high schools. Dear Gbapp Board of Education and Superintendent Marley, as parents of two Southwest student athletes, we are highly disappointed that winter athletics have not started yet. It has been great to see girls' basketball programs in Brown County and throughout the state of Wisconsin start practice this past week. Many teams even had their first scrimmage on Saturday. Boys' basketball programs had their first practice today, which include the school districts in Brown County such as the Shabanon, Bayport, DePere, Notre Dame, and Blaskey. Large multi-height school districts of Appleton and Oshkosh have started winter athletics as well. Unfortunately, the student athletes of Green Bay East, Preble, Southwest, and West were not allowed to begin winter athletics on time. Why are Green Bay student athletes being discriminated against and put at a disadvantage? It seems that they are held to a different standard than our neighboring school districts in Brown County. What criteria or standards is Gbapp's using that is different from our neighboring districts in Brown County? What is different from the other large schools in Appleton or Oshkosh? The WIA is encouraging participation. Many basketball programs throughout the state of Wisconsin have full 24-game schedules planned. I believe that it is imperative that we adapt to learn to navigate COVID-19. The entire state of Wisconsin is grappling with in-school versus virtual learning, but the vast majority of school districts have started winter athletics on time. A great first step for Gbapp's is to allow winter athletics to start immediately. There are protocols established by our neighboring school districts to keep student athletes safe and help them compete. Let's follow the lead of these well-respected school districts in Brown County on the issue and start winter athletics as soon as possible. Many student athletes are leaders throughout the school. They are given competition, and this mentally keeps them excelling in the classroom. Let's not lose any more students academically due to not allowing them to participate in winter athletics. Bringing smaller groups of students into the building at this time will allow for utilizing the safety metrics that you have planned for. I respectfully request and recommend that winter athletics commence small group workouts on November 30th with full practice to begin on December 7th. This will allow for the coaches to prepare the student athletes for conference competitions that begins in early January. It also allows coaches to schedule a few non-conference games prior to the conference season. The December non-conference games could be Preble versus West, Preble versus East, Southwest versus West, and Southwest versus East. Anything later than this timeline again puts Gbapp students, athletes at a disadvantage in an already compressed winter athletic season. Please respond to this timeline recommended by November 25th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Respectfully, Brian and Melissa, Southwest parents. I think I have one more because I believe the last person was called. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is Robin Bade, 3140 Crusay Lane in Green Bay. And concerned parent of Green Bay schools. The start of winter athletics for all Green Bay high schools. Dear Green Bay School Board and Superintendent, I am writing to you on behalf of a grassroots organization of concerned Green Bay school district parents regarding your recent decision to further delay the start of winter athletics and other various student activities. It's our sincere hope that the school board will consider their decision to delay the startup of winter athletics until January, but conversely follow the lead of other local school districts, implement a plan to start winter sports in the immediate future. Given the timetable and recent decision from the WIA, we are asking that the winter sports and activities start effective December 7th, 2020. We stood by your decision not to participate in fall sports. However, in doing so, there should have been ample time to understand mitigation efforts needed to provide an opportunity for our school athletes moving forward. Is there risk? Yes, there are risks. But there are also precautions being taken by other schools, along with the vast majority of schools throughout the state, to offer winter athletics to student athletes. Schools are working side by side with medical providers, implementing protocols to create a safe environment for the athlete, coach, and all those associated with the winter athletics program. Why should Green Bay schools be any different? Per your email, your decision was based upon the Brown County two-week average rolling burden rate. Interestingly, the other schools that made the decision to proceed with winter athletics and activities are also located in Brown County and made their decision based upon the same Brown County rolling burden rate. Even more troubling is that the Green Bay Area Public School District has chosen an arbitrary and capricious indicator threshold not supported by the CDC, the Health Department, or any other authoritative COVID-19 advisor. The CDC rolling burden rate highest risk threshold is greater than 200 positive cases per 100,000 cases, not 100 cases. Even at this highest risk threshold, the CDC states that, quote, "If after applying the core indicators described in the table below, a school is at medium, higher, or highest risk of transmission, it does not mean that the school cannot reopen for in-person learning," unquote. More importantly, the CDC states, quote, "This document proposes core and secondary indicators that school districts can use to aid in their decision-making process regarding full reopening for in-person learning. It does not explicitly include extracurricular activities like sports or theater conducted after school hours," unquote. I could spend much more valuable time seeing recent studies or articles concerning the impact this environment is having on our children. The time is not on our children's side. You clearly know the adverse impact virtual learning is having on our children. The same can be said of the lack of opportunity to participate in sports and other extracurricular activities. It does not take a degree in science or education to prove the additional adverse effects your decision to delay winter athletics is having on our children. Just ask any parent. You have an opportunity to do what is right and provide hope for our children moving forward by starting winter athletics and other student activities. As you consider in-person learning models, we strongly encourage you to use sports and extracurricular activities as a start to return to normalcy for our kids. We can definitely learn moving forward, but we need to move forward. School board members are elected by their constituents to represent those constituents, and right now, there is a lot of constituents the school board is not representing. It is time the school board takes a common sense approach, leaving parents to focus on the health of their children, while the board focuses on resources, our teachers, admin, and coaches with proper mitigation and protocols to return some type of normalcy for our children. We believe it starts with a December 7th start date for winter athletics and extracurriculars. This will allow all involved a short period of time to ease into a return with small group before the holiday break and allow staff and coaches a chance to fine-tune protocols moving forward. It is time this board finds a balance of what is right for our student athletes and providing an opportunity for those wanting to participate. Feeling anything past December 7th is a failure on your part as an elected official of the Green Bay School Board. We look forward to your response by Wednesday, November 25th, 2020. Together, we can start to give our students hope of participating in their passions. Respectfully, and then there's a number of parents, Robin Bade, Corey Peed, Jeremy Hoover, Joe Seber, Matt Dunlap, Bryant Politsky, and other concerned parents of the Green Bay schools. That's it.
Thank you, Melissa, for reading those for us. We appreciate it. And again, thank you to everyone who took the time certainly to call in tonight, have their comments read, and the number of emails that we've been getting during this time. All right, let's jump into the agenda. Number three is a few items that we have for general discussion. And first is charter schools update. So I'll hand that over probably to Steve and Vicky.
Yep, I'm gonna hand it over to Vicky and Renee and Jen. And this is part of an annual process to report to the board and confirm direction moving forward. So, Vicky, Renee, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, I was just mentioning before I turn it over to Renee, a quick thank you to the board for your continued support for our charter schools and recognition that not every student learns or is able to demonstrate their knowledge in the same way. So Renee?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. The purpose tonight for coming to you is to share a few things. Number one, we shared earlier the authorizer report. And I'm just gonna go over just a few points in there, and then if there's any questions about the to report, I will see if there's any there. And Jen and I are both on the line tonight to answer those. Jason Johnson was not available tonight, so if there's any about any W that can't be answered, we would make sure to take those questions to him and get back to the board. The authorizer report is a report that talks about the assessment scores and the growth in the students' assessment scores and also the financial performance. And just some highlights in there from John Dewey is, and actually this is for both charter schools, that because of COVID, they were not able to take the spring STAR assessment last year. And so the data that is in the authorizer report is from the beginning and the mid-year STAR assessments. And both of them show in their reports the growth that they made in the STAR assessments for reading and math. They both have very high goals, goals that are higher than what has been normally accomplished by students in the state of Wisconsin. And they are hoping to be able to continue those so that all students at those schools do achieve at least one year of growth in reading. A couple of things too to highlight that in JDOT for the ACT results, that their reading results are higher than the state average score. So that was great there. That for STEM achievements, their science average score is higher than the state average. And for proficiency in understanding complex texts, this number of students above proficient is higher than the state average. For, let's see. Oh, and then for any W, they didn't want to point out that nationally, and I said state, nationally, only 50% of students nationally meet individualized projected growth scores. And their goal last year was 65%, and they are bumping that up then to 80% of students will have reached that. Also, I wanted to share that there was a research and program evaluation review of JDOT because they are ending their contract. And there is both a link to the report that they had done plus the JDOT action plan. And in the report, there were 11 different components that recommendations were made with 39 different recommendations. And if you read through those, some of them seem similar. I'll give you an example. In areas of location and transportation, both of those mention difficulties with transportation to and from JDOT since we have to use city busing. And so if you look through those, or if you have any questions, know that they are 39 different recommendations and 39 different action plans, but some of them are related. The second part is information regarding the contract. And just a reminder that their contract is expiring, JDOT's is expiring at the end of this year. And in the contract, the school board, not the governance board, so you will need to make a decision whether to renew the contract with JDOT. And it has to be done five months prior to the expiration of the contract. So we would need to know, number one, do you want to renew the contract for JDOT by January 30th, 2021? And if so, for how many years? Up to five years? The third thing that we have in there in the memo is the JDOT expansion grant. And in there shows the years. The year two is the year that we are in right now. And there were some difficulties meeting those for two reasons. Number one, because of starting this year with COVID and online, some students chose not to go into the online program for JDOT, but they decided to stay with their school because they were going to be online anyway. So we did not have as many students as we were hoping for for online. But also, there is a lack of funding to support increase in staffing. And so that will be an ongoing concern that we have to discuss with the expansion grant. So that was the purpose of coming to the meeting tonight. And now I wanted to see if you have any questions about the authorizer report, the program evaluation document, the action plan, anything about renewing the contract or the expansion grant.
Renee?
Yeah.
I apologize, I had to handle something in the house quickly. And I missed the very last statement that you made about hiring staff, funding. Can you just revisit what you were saying about that, please?
Yeah, so in the expansion grant, you have to have a plan for how much you're going to expand each year. And with our projections, we wanted to have more students in sixth through eighth grade, ninth through 12th, and so on. But there wasn't enough staffing to support it. And so, and the problem with staffing for JDOT is when the district does staffing, they do it before all of the students get to choose whether they want to go to JDOT or not. And so what we do is we base it on the number of students who at that time have opted to enroll in JDOT. If we could do it either at a later time or we could do it based on the expansion grant, then we would have the staff there ready to go for students who come late. We've had for both schools, students who want to come as late as August into our schools. And so that was part of the JDOT. The review is to do more, giving more information to the public about the schools. But for instance, there were 12 names on the online list because we didn't have the staff to go, more students online. And then it just turned, it worked out okay with the schools going online. So it's just kind of a weird situation. I've had made it aware, I've had, we've made it aware to HR and we're working through that. But also, we need to figure out how to get our families signed up for alternative schools earlier.
So if, when you say a shortage of staff, what are you talking about? Like, number wise, what are you looking at?
Well, if we look at that enrollment goal, for instance, for the sixth through 12th grade online full time, we wanted to have 40 students in there, and that would require two advisors because our capacity is 20, that's 15 to 20 per person. We only have one online advisor, so we couldn't take more. If we wanted to, we wouldn't have the staff for them.
So isn't a matter of funding for the staff or actual individuals who are interested in the position?
It's kind of a weird combination of both because we have to base the staffing on the number of students enrolled at a certain time. But if we do that, and then later on, students want to enroll, they have to go on a waitlist. So then they can't come in. So it's a combination of both of them. But to be financially responsible, we have to have the enrollment first. And what's hard is to try to get a teacher late in the game if a student would enroll because they need an alternative license, that gets to be a little bit more difficult to staff them to.
And who has the authority as far as that order of dissemination, like staff versus student? Like who ultimately in charge of that decision? Part of that, and we're actually working on the staffing process to address exactly what Renee is talking about. It's something that we know we've had to work on, and we finally have the right people in place to actually make that change. And Renee's been part of that discussion. We hope to address it sooner rather than later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, did you have a question?
It's not really a question as much as it is, every time we talk about charter schools, I know that there are people out there that have, that have a, let's say, a less than positive reaction to that. So when we talk about it, I was wondering, Renee or somebody could talk about the difference between instrumentality and non-instrumentality charter schools so that, because we have a lot of people watching tonight, and they might be like, why does our district have charter schools? And it might just be a good idea to revisit that a little bit, that particular issue?
And actually, that I think is a twofold question. So there's a difference between asking, what's the difference between instrumentality and non-instrumentality? And why would someone choose a charter school? So on the first one, when a charter school is an instrumentality of the district, then this school board really still oversees because the district is paying for the staffing of those students, or the staffing of the teachers and the staff of district employees. If we were a non-instrumentality, it would be totally privately funded, and the school board would have nothing to do with it, would only be the governance board. They would have to figure out all of their funding on their own. So we are an instrumentality, so our teachers are still part of the district. For why do some people choose charter schools? And if Jen wants to add anything, please feel free, Jen. But I don't remember if Vicki said it or Stephen said it, students learn differently. And in J-Doll, doing project-based is just the creative way of learning that some students need. And in NEW, the competency-based is what some students need. Plus, both of them really want to add that STEM quality that goes along with doing proficiency or project-based learning. So it's a different way of learning that we're hoping, it's kind of like, why do some students go out for sports? And why do some do the arts? Everybody does things differently. And it's just a great way to be able to capture students to learn a little bit differently and help them get their education.
Thank you. I just, I know that sometimes that it can be a little confusing. I am very, very proud of the work our district does in this area, in these two charter schools. And I just, I wanted to just make sure that if there's people watching that don't quite understand that that's a huge difference, and that might help. So, thank you, Renee.
Absolutely. And if anybody ever wanted more information, my, if you go to the district website, my name should be out there, and I could definitely answer phone calls or emails about the charter schools.
I have another question whenever.
Yeah.
And you can come back to me.
Great, thanks. Jen, I have a question for you. So as the leader of John Dewey Academy, I know you've got the charter grant and you've got your action plans. But what would you say is your top priority or your three to five-year vision? And where are you trying to take John Dewey? What's the next big thing for John Dewey?
That is an excellent question, and it's something that the staff and I have talked about a lot. And really, we've been listening to our families, as well as the families that are on our waiting list. And they all are asking that we open up this opportunity for more students. So that instead of when we first started, or at least when I first started a few years ago, we had about 50 students. And they wanted us to be able to provide this opportunity for more families. So we added a few grade levels, and now we are sixth grade through 12th grade instead of eighth through 12th. And we are also trying to add enrollment so that we can be available to more students.
Great, thank you.
I just want to kind of add to that too, Eric. If any of you had the chance to see their most recent engagement tonight, oh my goodness, it was so cool because to have a family engagement all virtual, it was set up so uniquely. I was very proud. If anybody put anything on the pamphlet, you would have noticed my name all over because I was in a million rooms, all right, not a million, but I was in many of the rooms checking out the students' projects. And it is also amazing that you can see the growth between the newer J-Doll students and the more experienced J-Doll students. And it was, it was very nice. So a little shout out there. And it's just kind of a reason for why would you want to go there? And I'm hoping that they have that opportunity in the future too.
Right, thanks. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Can you clarify, I know, I believe NEW follows the sleep, study, research, or school start times. Does J-Doll as well?
Yep, our start time is 8:45 during normal schooling.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was a point that was out there. Obviously, in very much supportive that for social, emotional, and physical well-being. And that is something that I think I'm hoping could be maybe pushed a bit more when it comes to selling the school programs. I think there are parents out there, I hear from them constantly, that that is something that they're concerned about when it comes to learning and physical and mental well-being. And maybe as far as like this year and this experience with the pandemic and what we're seeing going on, that, I mean, would it be too much to even think that maybe this is something that could help kids catch up? If maybe they were to consider doing this type of learning?
I would.
They could maybe, I don't know, transition back?
Are you asking about the late start or just the programming at the school?
All of it.
Okay. I would say for the programming, that would be more actually kind of geared toward the academy program at NEW. And I will also say that, and that's the program for seniors, that the schools have wanted to know, can they get the academy program at their schools to help them get caught up in this pandemic? But you have to have an alternative license. And we also, one of the disadvantages of being a charterer, even with being an instrumentality, is you can't just swap teachers from school to school. If, for instance, Rhonda, you were a teacher at one of the schools, you can ask the next year to transfer to a different school in the district, but you can't transfer to a charter school. So we can't, we can expend as much as we can to the number of staff that we have, but we can't just move our program into traditional schools nor our staff into traditional schools. So yes, I think it would be great. And last year, we saw that because we did open up a modified academy summer school to help seniors. But I know that a lot of people are wishing that there wasn't a waitlist of over 100 for the academy at NEW.
Thanks.
Thank you for asking and for the interest.
All right. Any other questions for the team about John Dewey?
Or NEW.
Or NEW, yeah. I just didn't see Jason. I'll follow up with him later. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for giving us the time.
All right, next topic, letter B under discussion items is grading changes.
So if you'll remember, last year, the board provided an opportunity for some flexibility in application of grades at the high school level. And we thank you for earlier this year extending that deadline for parents and students to go through that process with the high schools. As a result of that conversation, we have received input from our building leaders with a request for a follow-up, and Vicki and Judy are going to walk us through that.
Actually, I'm just going to turn it right over to Judy. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. As our superintendent just mentioned, certainly appreciate the opportunity we had last year, as well as the start of this year, to better support our students with our grading policy. And so I'm bringing forward this evening for discussion, possibility of additional options to, again, to better support, engage, and even re-engage some of our students. After the first six-week grading period, we did a grade rate analysis, and we started to note that we have a number of students really struggling. And when I compared the failure rate to where we were last year at this time, we noted that in some cases, it was almost double where we were. And so in talking with the secondary leaders, we came up with a couple of different options that we'd like to bring forward this evening. Two of the three options really aren't new per se. So the first one is about limited enrollment or no grade, which means if a student simply has not been in attendance at a certain percentage, a teacher certainly cannot assess how a student is doing in the course. And so they would have the opportunity, instead of just giving that student an F, to put down limited enrollment or no grade. And the student, of course, is a credit-bearing class, so they would need to retake that course for credit and for a grade. The other option we also use is incomplete. What is a little different is that we're asking that the incomplete, we give students additional time in order to make up assignments if they may need, actually going all the way through summer of 2021. So again, just giving that flexibility for the incomplete. And then the third option is pass. If a student has completed a sufficient amount of work, but the letter grade would be anything lower than an A, the teacher can submit a request to the principal to assign a pass. This would allow the student, again, to earn credit, but the grade would not be calculated in the grade point average. And you may be wondering why an A or anything lower than an A. And we are hearing from some, a variety of students, but we're also hearing from students who are very, taking anything lower than an A is becoming very, very stressful for them. And so again, trying to address that socially and emotional part of some of our very high-end learners as well. So I will stop at this point to see if there are any questions regarding those three options. Otherwise, I can talk about some of our next steps that we would like to take.
Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you, Judy. So from what I'm seeing here, the recommendation would be this change through the end of this school year, so June 2021. And that would be regardless of whether we go back to hybrid or to full in-person? And if, explain why.
Yes, because again, we can't predict the future. So we may be in and out if we get to hybrid and so forth at a secondary level. So again, just providing as many options as possible to support our students during this very unique time.
I have one more question. Thank you, Judy. For that pass option, what that also, it says in here that the teacher could submit a request. I would assume that the student could also work, make the request to the teacher as well if that was something that the student wanted to explore?
Right. So if, based on the conversation tonight, if this is something that the board is willing for us to continue to pursue, I would like to then begin working on a communication plan that would work with our parents, you know, certainly communicating with their parents and our students. I'd also like to develop lessons that would be delivered during the homeroom or slash advisory time. Because I do think there's a good piece there regarding student empowerment and being an advocate for yourself. But again, I'd also be working with our building leaders to talk about that, those triggers. What would it be when it comes to looking at student grades and really working with our teachers and our students and our families, just like we did this last time, to make sure that we're putting our students in the best possible light?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I actually have one more question, and this is it. This is actually it, I promise. Judy, are you seeing this, other districts of our size around Wisconsin, taking on this approach to grading throughout the rest of the school year? And can you talk a little bit about that, you know, as well?
I have not heard from the other big five school districts at this point. I do know that there are Big Ten universities that are taking a look at the pass, no pass option at this point for the semester. So, but no, I have not heard from other school districts our size looking at this yet. I don't know if our superintendent or others have, but I usually am not involved in the big five discussions.
That hasn't been a topic yet, but if you're interested in that, I can certainly get that out to our group email list and get some answers fairly quickly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. So I appreciate this report. I'm, I guess, another reason that you would want to have it applied just if it's below an A is that I wouldn't want someone to be accidentally disadvantaged or someone to have filled out something not thinking they were going to earn an A, earn an A, but then they had at some point requested a pass. If this is something that's a teacher request, though, like, I guess it sounds like something that might be for some students but not others. I mean, what if for any reason, like I want to take a class for a pass, and the teacher doesn't think that's the right thing to do? Or the, I guess it seems something that if it's going to happen, and I have a second question related to that, before I can say for sure I support it in this format. But like, how does that work out? I mean, what if, you know, some teachers? I guess, yeah, that's my question.
So again, taking, having that conversation with our building leaders to determine what those triggers would be would be very important because again, we want to be as consistent as possible and open it to any student who, and parent, who feels that this would be the better option. So it could be that the student initiates it, the parent calls and wants to initiate it. It doesn't have to rely simply on the teacher. We were just trying to look at a mechanism that it would still have to go through the principal to make sure the principal is aware of what is happening, whether the student is going to take the letter grade or if they would choose to take the pass option.
So is this for the principal to approve, or is this for the principal to be aware of? And it would be a grading, a grading policy for the rest of the year? There's a difference.
Aware, awareness.
Okay, because as written, it sounds like they would, it sounds like it's a request implies that there's a decision to be made. So you're saying there really isn't a decision, it's a notification that they would want to do it this way? Okay. And then have we, have we talked to teachers at various grade levels about this, and how do they feel about it? I think last year, the case was very clear to have all grading be a do-no-harm situation last. the case was very clear to have all grading be a do no harm situation last spring because we were in an emergency mode. Just trying to offer what we could, but I know there's teachers that said that without the ability to, to have grading that causes other, having grades that count, that causes some other problems. So I realize this does, isn't exactly grades that wouldn't count. You still have to pass, but what has the teacher feedback been on this?
So all the building, the high school leaders have taken it to their building leadership teams. And for the most part, the response from the teachers has been positive. They do want to, of course, say that in order to be eligible for the pass option and even the incomplete option, a student needs to stay engaged till the end of the grading period. So that's what makes it a bit different from last year, as you referenced, you know, we did the do no harm and you had the grade as you left in March, which we had a number of students who just left and, and didn't stay engaged and those are real struggles. So in this way, we're at least saying, we know it's really difficult. Sometimes to be online, we know that. Stay with it and we're going to provide some options for you to hopefully keep you engaged.
Judy, real quick question. I think I know the answer, but just want to make sure this really only impacts our high school students, elementary and middle school. I mean, that's not for credit. So this policy doesn't apply to them, correct?
Correct. For the elementary, I would like it to be open for secondary, including our middle level, even though it's really was driven by our credit bearing courses. I do think there's some middle level learners who would benefit from having some of these options as well, even though their transcript, it doesn't give them a credit and so forth. Sometimes just having an incomplete or a pass. Psychologically, it's better than looking at an F on a report card, right? So I would like it to be open to our middle level, but it's mainly for the high school.
Okay, thanks. We'll go Brenda, Rhonda, Noah, I know you're in there too. Let's start with Brenda. We'll go to Rhonda.
So Judy, when you say you would like it to be open to the middle school, so does that mean it's a building choice or a teacher choice? Or is it going to be required?
It would be open to the middle level. And so similar to like with the high schools, these are options. So the default still remains the letter grade system. These are options that are available to our buildings. And so then I would work with the building level leaders to see, to have some consistency across the comprehensive middle schools and our high schools.
So a building could actually decide not to?
No, no, I'm sorry. No, they would not have that option.
Okay. So they have to have, they have to adopt this option.
If the board approves it, then yes, we would, yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, so you had touched on that the six week failure rate looks like it's doubled. Do you have a number of students?
Not.
Is there a number that you're working with as far as how many students? Cause the six week failure rate doesn't really tell you how many students you're looking at. So when you say double, it still doesn't really give us an idea of a number.
Sure. I can run those and have those reports sent to you. So you can see, I don't have the numbers here this evening, Rhonda.
Um, there's no numbers available at all?
Once I'm done on the call, I can certainly pull up the report and have it sent to the superintendent. If you look at the.
I, I think that's an important factor and figure to think about when we talk about this, right? Cause is it 50? It's doubled to 100. Is it 4,000? It's doubled to 8,000. It's just, for me personally, that makes a big difference in what the number is specifically. And can you, and can you also touch on? What do you believe the reason is? Because a failure rate that's doubled, that's significant in six weeks. So can we touch on why you feel that's actually the case?
The feedback I received from the buildings was about students ghosting. A lot of students will come on and then not stay engaged with the lesson. There are other situations where we simply have not, where students are simply not engaged at all, where they don't even sign on. It's not because they don't have the tech, they're just not signing on. I would say those are the two major reasons that I received from the buildings with the first one being the ghosting.
So it's fair to say that obviously it's a result of the virtual learning format.
Correct.
Here, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Noah, it's, and I see your hand too, but I don't know his hand was raised. So go to Noah and then Aiden.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I shouldn't take too long. So I would just like to echo what has already been said about the past. I think that whenever the formal piece gets written up for approval, I think it should, it shouldn't be the principal approves it. I think having the layers in there could lead just accidentally to certain kids maybe getting more of the past and other kids not and stuff like that. And I think, you know what I mean? If we're going to have it, it should just be, it should just be there. And this, it said that this system would apply. So if you get an incomplete, that would apply through August of 21. Would that, so what would happen with semester one grades? Would that also be in there? I'm just trying to wrap my head around that.
Right. So um, my understanding now is that in the past, an incomplete would turn to an after, after a certain time period. What I'm asking for is to allow that to stay on the transcript or in that grade until the end of August, when in giving our students the opportunity to make up that work for a letter grade, to have it changed.
Okay. Thank you. That makes a lot of sense. I'm done with, Mr. President. Thanks.
Go ahead, Aiden.
Um, thank you, sir. Um, so earlier you mentioned consistency and at the same time, that this wouldn't be something that a school would be able to turn down, except you also seem to want to hand off the decision to teachers and then to principals. And I feel like there's, Noah touched on it, but there's a lot of arbitrariness between all those layers and a lot of it's based more on the teacher's relations to a student more than a student's actual needs.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah. Did you have a question, Aiden, or?
Oh, yeah. Frick. Sorry.
No, no, that's all right. I mean, if you're making a comment in agreements with what Noah said, that's, that's fine. Just want to make sure that if you had a question that we can try to get it addressed.
I should have written everything I was thinking of down, but generally I concur with Noah.
Yep.
Not a perfect system by any means. And so I think I hear you saying, Aiden, is that doing what we can to make sure that our students have that voice in determining the direction of the grade, correct?
Yeah, um, obviously the whole reason that we're here is to represent student voice. So it's something I felt like I was obligated to bring up.
Very good. Thank you.
Andrew and then Rhonda.
Okay. So I, I guess it's, it's a really, it's an option for your, what you're proposing is an option for the student to be able to take the pass. Now a teacher might initiate it if they know that a student might be particularly, for whatever reason, might be, it might be a particularly good idea to do it. But I think, yeah, I, as you can see, it's just the term option is causing some concern and it just needs to be worded in a way that it's clear that this is, you know, this is going to be what, what we're going to do for, for this year if, if approved.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So if I'm hearing correctly, that the ghosting and the engagement levels have dropped. And that's the reason why this, you're seeing double the failure rate. What's to stop kids, students who decide that I'm going to choose this pass fail grade and I'm just going to continue to ghost and not engage? I mean, that is a fair question, right? So obviously the concern is if I know that I can have this regardless, why should I not ghost or why should I engage in class?
So the language that would be for the incomplete and the pass would be that those are options if you stay engaged or reengaged till the end of the grading period.
So what, okay. But what does that mean exactly? Does that mean that you have to have your camera on constantly? Are we asked, like, what does that mean?
Yeah. Um, yeah, we definitely, not the camera piece, because we know that that is some significant pieces there. So we wouldn't go with that direction. But completing assignments, you know, at least connecting with your teacher. I mean, there's a lot of different ways, I guess, a person could interpret engagement. It's just seeing that there's an effort being made to at least get some of the assignments done and not just completely giving up. And you're right, there's, there's nothing to say that it will change it. We're just trying to think of different ways to, again, engage or reengage our students.
Go ahead, Christina.
Just to comment, what I think is nice about this is that it still requires students to do the work to get the, to get the credit, right? It doesn't say, oh, you get this pass and you know, and, and then you're, you can move on. It doesn't just move kids on. They still have to do the work. What it does is it gives kids an off ramp and a family an off ramp if things aren't working well. There are many reasons why students would be experiencing something like this. We have multi-generational families in one bedroom apartments where people are competing for wifi and, and workspace. And I think what this does is knowing that COVID isn't going to last forever, that when they're in a better space, they can get themselves back into a better place with their grades and with their coursework and their credits. So that, that's what I, I like about this plan. So thank you for that, Judy, because I've heard some families reached out to me and were concerned about this watering down, you know, the high academic rigor. And what I've said is that's absolutely not true. The standards are still there. It's just a recognition that some kids are going to need to take a pause and it gives them a way to come back.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
My follow up, just, just to ask another question and relates to Christina's point about the multi-generational families struggling to compete for wifi. Well, what happens if that's something that continues for the rest of the school year? I mean, if, if, if the barriers are in fact wifi or housing or parents aren't in the home because they're working, right? This, this is what I think about is typically it's, those are barriers. Parents aren't home to make sure the kids are engaging. The wifi is the situation in general. I mean, sometimes even in my own home, I'm having that and I have pretty decent wifi. So hearing this, it's, it's nice. It sounds good. But if we continue in a, in a model that is, in a sense is creating, creating the problem, I'm not sure what this looks like in the end. So I just wanted to share that concern.
Yeah. No, like you're just.
Man, this won't, this won't stop our social workers and counselors from continuing the work that they're doing to try to address those barriers that you talked about, Rhonda.
And I'm, and I'm grateful for that. But when I hear that failure rate has doubled, and I know they're working, the social workers are working hard at, at doing what they can already. I just, I'm concerned. I think it's going to get more difficult during the winter. There are more fatigue in general, coming back after the holidays, you know, they have a few weeks of not having to deal with this. I just worry about it a lot.
So do we. So do we.
Go ahead, Christina, and then we'll go.
Never mind. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Noah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I came up with more stuff. So it was kind of already mentioned. I think that what is determined to be staying engaged, it depends how that's defined, right? In the final product. So I just am asking that when, when the document does get drafted, that caution is exercised. So you don't end up with the F grade being almost mutually exclusive with only a very narrow overlap between what would be counted as staying engaged. Does that kind of make sense? I don't, if, if a large chunk of the people who, who do end up with an F and therefore an incomplete or, or some alternate plan that's offered, if almost all of them aren't considered to be staying engaged, so they don't have access to that, that's just a lot of, it's a lot of Fs. And I mean, I get you guys are doing what you can. I'm just saying, when the final product is drafted, a good definition for what staying engaged is and how that's written into the final product would be super important. But at, at the end of the day, I like this plan and I thank you guys for, for looking for ultimate solutions for us. Appreciate it.
Good point. Yes. Staying engaged. Sometimes you have to quantify it, but we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
All right. Any final questions for Judy? All right. Thanks for, you and the team, Judy, for bringing this forward.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right. Next discussion item is suspension of board policies for graduation requirements.
So as we move forward with the school year, one of the things that we know is that our board has set a higher standard for graduation than the state of Wisconsin has under statutory regulation. We would like to consider, we would like you to consider suspending the current board policy requiring graduation that is different than that of the state and allow us to use the state graduation requirements in order to ensure that students who may take a reduced course load due to the current stress of the pandemic, have that opportunity to continue their progress towards graduation. And again, Vicky is here to assist and I know Judy's still unwilling to. So Vicky, I have to turn it over to you for additional live comment before we open up the board for questions.
Yeah. I know. Thank you. I have the easy part tonight of just turning it over. Melissa's worked on a resolution similar to what was presented last year and it is available also if there are questions. Melissa?
Thanks, Vicky. I feel like we got the hot potato tonight. The resolution is the same language as what we had last year, allowing for the reliance on the state criteria for graduation, as both Steve and, and Vicky have said. And it allows still for students who have more graduation credits to, to continue on the path that they still has, but doesn't penalize anyone for the inability to access those credits.
All right. Any questions on this for Melissa or Vicky? Very similar to what we've, what we did last, last year. All right. I don't see any questions. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
All right. And last discussion item under this part of the agenda is the 2021, 22 school calendar.
Thank you. And we've been working to ensure that we have a calendar that meets board requirements. We've also worked with our employee groups to ensure that there's an understanding of when questions have been asked and answered. Terry's been instrumental in driving this process. I'm going to turn the calendar over to Terry.
Thank you. What you'll see before you is a recommendation to continue a very traditional calendar to what you have approved previously. We had begun some deeper work in looking at research around potential changes to calendar and moving forward to the board, a two year calendar cycle. And we would like to do that following this year with. Calendar cycle, and we would like to do that following um this year with the impacts of COVID. So um to allow the collaboration time that we feel is necessary in the research. Um, and and ensure that we are doing things in the right um timing. And um again, with large input from a variety of stakeholders, we'd like to maintain some consistency. With the calendar, um and that would include. The seven early release days similar to what is calendared or projected for this school year. As well as built-in um snow days and other um calendar breaks, as would be typically found on our calendar. We're bringing this calendar recommendation to now to allow for our community to plan. Forward, we recognize that many of our stakeholders need the opportunity to put in their. Requests for vacation and other planning that takes place within families um to to know ahead. What the the dates look like. Vicky, did I miss anything important? I know we've been working on this work collaboratively.
I would just like to stress the part you opened with Terry because I think that's important for the board to know that we're. Looking at. Doing this better. If if the calendar works, then that's what we're presenting, but we know we can do better. We hope to continue that work when we get back to what more normal. Type of situation. Thank you, Terry.
All right, Rhonda.
Can you touch on snow days and what's going to happen on snow days?
Yes, we would follow a very traditional practice when we have our students back on site. And as we plan forward, we want to ensure that we are keeping equity at the center of our work. And we know that once we bring all of our devices back on site. Including Kajits and hotspots and many of the um. Resources that have been deployed out while we are offsite. We know that our students and um staff will um need to have the opportunity to have a more traditional. Um, snow time because we will not have all of that equipment out and amongst. Um, so we want to ensure that our students. Um, all have access and that we continue to uh plan ahead as we can for uh the. Snow days. So um they are maintained and those minutes are built into the calendar that we are proposing. For example, the day in May, that is um there that we have off if we do not need that because we've canceled due to. Um, inclement severe inclement weather.
Okay, um. Thank you, but I just would like to know if you could answer just let's say. There's a snowstorm next week. Are students coming to school or are they going outside? At home?
Well, in our offsite model, our students um are already home and we would be. Putting out a communication relative to um what that looks like for any um onsite. Services such as food service and if they would be able to um. Deliver have food pickup on that day. And what we're trying to do now is with the excellent forecasting that we have, if we have. A large blizzard um coming our way next week. Um, then our food service will plan to have the opportunity for families to pick up multiple meals. For that next day so that they um have access to that in the event that we should need to close any onsite services.
Okay, um, I guess I'll be more specific. Are students logging on on snow days? Are they logging into class or are they? Not in class?
Man, um, during the offsite model, Rhonda, students will continue with virtual learning.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I believe the topic we're on is the calendar for twenty twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, which will be. In person. So questions related to snow days, I I think we have to wait till the next agenda item, not this.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll I'll hold on to it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Terry on the calendar? All right, thanks for the time, Terry. Appreciate it. All right, uh, item number four on the agenda is pandemic update. Uh, we have two pieces uh here that we'll hear about. Uh, the first is academic model considerations.
So I'm on mute. Sorry about that. Josh, do I have the ability to share?
You should.
Okay. Let's see if I can do this. All right, Eric, I can see you. So can you let me know? Can you see the slide deck?
Yep, you're good.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I'm going to walk through the slide deck uh quickly here. I uh to give you an update on where we're at. Uh, and then I want to make sure that uh as we're going through here, I presume you're going to have questions. Uh, we've got a team on here that can help. Uh, but before I start, uh, again, I'd I'd like to uh. Uh, point a couple of things out. So first of all, this work started back in July. Uh, and uh as an administrative team, one of the things that we're charged with doing uh is uh planning uh for the school year. Uh, and bringing those plans forward to the board. Uh, we base those plans on what we know at the time. Uh, and we base those on what we be believed to be best practice. Uh, and so as part of our process, uh, we began that uh back in July, we put our work groups together. Um, they began developing uh plans for uh both in-person blended and offsite uh education. Uh, and that process has evolved over time. You could see that already tonight as we come through. Uh, and share updates with you, whether it be uh on grading uh or graduation or things like that. So. This is an evolution in that process. Uh, and I will, as we go through here, uh, try to make sure that I point out where things have changed. Uh, but I would also welcome uh that opportunity to answer questions that you may have uh as you see things that feel like they've changed you. I, as we know, I. Oops. There we go. Sorry about that. Was unable to advance. Um, so we know, I don't want to belabor this, but we know that obviously we're struggling right now uh with the current pandemic. I, you know, if you're watching the news, the national news, the local news, whether it's don't travel for Thanksgiving or make sure that you are trying to. Celebrate the holiday and uh with your small nuclear family. Um, there's a real concern about where we're at today and where we may be at in the next couple of weeks. Um, as we go through that uh process. Uh, during the uh the summer, uh, we worked hard on the gating criteria. We initially came to you and selected. Uh, five percent positivity testing is our initial gating criteria. Uh, as we learned more about that and the impact of uh testing. Uh, there was a decision by the board to pivot to the burden rate. Uh, and that is uh was approved on October twelfth. Uh, it gives us that opportunity then uh to consider when we would be offsite only being blended. Uh, and when we would have onsite instruction. Uh, this is our current uh data dashboard uh that's out online. Uh, it helps uh people understand where that burden rate is at compared to where that gating. Uh, criteria is. Uh, a reminder that we are going to revisit this based on the board's request on December fourteenth. Uh, and what we are presenting to you tonight is I uh what will happen when we hit that gate. Uh, so this is not uh, this doesn't have to do with the gating pro- uh protocol. So this is what we will do. Uh, when the gate is hit. Uh, so right now we're in that offsite model. Uh, there are other choices are a blended model and an onsite model. Uh, that's our progression. Uh, so as we look at our alternatives, uh, the one that appears to be most relevant to us right now is the move to blended learning. Uh, that team again has been working on that diligently for the past couple of months. Uh, one major change uh is the explored cohort model that we started with. Uh, parents have asked about this. Rhonda and I were at a PTA meeting for West and this issue came up. Uh, our initial plan was to uh cohort students uh pre-K to twelve. Uh, and to bring them in on an alternate day basis. Uh, and that was the model that we proposed when we initially brought forward the three model. Uh, setup for you. Uh, since that time, uh, the planning group has spent a quite a bit of uh operational effort trying to determine what works and what doesn't work. And they came up to uh came up with a lot of challenges to this blended model. Uh, and it uh, you can see, I'm not going to read all of those to you, but I'm going to point some of them out to you. Uh, there was a concern about uh inequity for kids. Uh, and uh especially. Uh, as we are looking at trying to balance uh kids who are offsite and kids who are onsite and how the teachers would actually be. Uh, responsible for those students. Uh, we also took a look at uh staffing concerns. Uh, and I I consideration about. Uh, whether or not we would be able to have uh a teacher that would teach uh both cohorts. Uh, and manage uh the offsite students as they uh split between those cohorts. Um, pacing was a significant issue for us as we started looking at our calendars to determine how many Thursdays and Fridays and Mondays and Tuesdays were off. Uh, trying to get a balance uh for kids as they work through it. Uh, dropping down uh to the bottom, um, we know that uh that physical distancing one is going to be a challenge for us. If you remember in our gating criteria, the CDC requirement said. Uh, that we would look at trying to be as uh close as possible uh to that six-foot distance. Uh, and our uh study groups told us that that would be substantially more difficult. Uh, at the secondary level and in particular due uh to the transition of students between classes. So as a result of that, they've come forward with a proposal I for an alternative. Uh, and this blended model hybrid would actually now bring our pre-K to five students in. Uh, all day, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday remain a virtual day. Uh, provides us an opportunity to both uh clean the school. Um, it also gives us an opportunity for teachers in the onsite and the uh blended model uh to collaborate, uh, ensure that pacing. Uh, is uh keeping students uh on par with each other. Uh, you'll note that uh we talked here about returning in stages. We'd start with our littlest learners first. Um, Head Start and four K uh through grade two, uh, English and our bilingual programs, and then we proceed uh to our intermediate elementary students. At the middle level, I we would focus on our grade six students. Uh, those of you that have had kids that have gone through transition will know grade six and grade nine at the middle school and high school. Uh, we know those are significant challenges for kids as they navigate new schools, uh, new uh course. Uh, uh arrangements. Uh, and we want to make sure that we get those kids in. Uh, Rhonda mentioned before the engagement issue. Uh, we think that this is a really important thing to consider as we look at those students in those transition years. We'd also look at the students with disabilities in our English learner learners and bring them back in stages. Again, as with the elementary ones, they will remain a virtual day. Uh, and to start with, grade seven and eight will remain virtual and grades ten, eleven and twelve will remain virtual. Uh, again, remember, this is a progression. We're going from offsite to blended to onsite. Uh, and so the intentionality here is that uh as things get better, uh, that we're able to return our seven, eight and ten, eleven, twelve students to campus. Uh, on this uh slide, I'd uh draw your attention uh to uh the um. Uh, that third bullet there that's in bold. Uh, that uh we would uh I use this uh model when we met the gate. Uh, that's been approved by the board. Uh, and then uh again, that idea that we would implement our physical distancing whenever and wherever possible. But I think it's important for people to know, for you to know, for the community to know, uh, that uh it's not an absolute. We would not be able to maintain that six-foot distance at all times. Uh, for all students. Uh, we would bring all employees uh back onto campus. Uh, and there is always an exception for those that uh I have worked through uh their inability to return because of either uh medical or FMLA issues. Uh, we want to make sure that parents know that there's always an opportunity to choose virtual learning. Uh, we're guaranteeing that through the end of the school year. Uh, and one of the important parts of this process is after the board has determined uh the applicability of this model. Uh, and then uh in any revisions that we might have to make and then uh review their gating criteria on December fourteenth. Uh, it's imperative that we reach out to parents and students uh and determine which children will take advantage of the uh continuing virtual model. Uh, and that will help us determine uh how best to staff that. Uh, and then how to staff uh those students that choose to return uh in the blended model. Uh, so a couple of things that are important to note on this, uh, if they choose to go into the virtual model, they do not lose their spot. Uh, if they're choiced into a school, um, that's a question that we've asked, uh, been asked on several occasions, so we want to reassure parents about that. Uh, we also want to reassure them, if you go to the fourth bullet down, um, staffing has been an issue uh in uh Wisconsin. And some of our neighboring districts. Um, all of our children will be taught uh by Greenberry Public School District educators. Uh, and uh we will, we can't guarantee that they would have the same teacher as they've had either in the virtual program this year. Um, or as they might otherwise have been uh scheduled to, uh, had they been onsite at the start of the school year. Uh, and part of that depends on uh where children uh are located who choose to go with a virtual program. Uh, and then where our educators are and how those align with each other. All right, I know I went through that relatively quickly, but I wanted to make sure that uh I was able to hit some of the highlights and more than anything else, leave it open. Uh, for questions. Um, I'll stop sharing now, but if you need me to put that uh deck back up, uh, refer to any of the specific slides, I'll give you an opportunity to do that. Um, so again, we got members of the team on here. Uh, but uh we would be open to the questions that you have. Uh, about the uh the new hybrid uh blended model that we're proposing. Uh, for that uh point in time when we hit the gating criteria. Christina?
I got you, Eric.
Thanks.
Uh, so Steve, I know you said this, but I just want to repeat it again to make sure we're hearing you correctly and our listeners are following. Today, we're talking about the hybrid model, how this could look. Once the board determines what that will and could look like, and we pass that, we determine that as a team. Then that will then are in our, what I don't remember the date, but the December board meeting will be relooking at gating criteria because we set up that. That end date when we voted the last time. So we'll do hybrid model programming. Gating criteria and then a s- a parent survey that would determine who wants to go virtual and who wants to move hybrid. Am I understanding that correctly?
Right, we'd actually, uh, as opposed to a survey, we'd actually create the additive woman opportunity for parents so that they don't have to go through the process twice.
Okay, okay, but they would essentially, as you're saying, opt in. So that's kind of what we're looking at a timeline. So we're not talking about gating criteria today. We're talking about the hybrid model as it exists in front of us.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. So so we're in fact, was in fact being. Proposed here. Is that? The hybrid status would actually, although we still wouldn't be meeting on Wednesdays. It would be a full elementary return. Would it would it even, would it be? Modified? I had a teacher suggest to me, maybe we spread out. You know, give elementary some more space by putting them into a larger into a secondary building. Maybe that's not open. Or is this, would this just be a full return to regular class size? Uh. But it when the blended metric is reached.
That's right, it'd be a full return uh when we reach the blended metric. Uh, a couple of things to consider. I I I can't uh tell you specifically until we've gone through the process itself of enrolling parents. Uh, but we do know that there were uh students in the uh previous. Uh, survey to parents who had indicated that they would choose to remain online for the remainder of the year. Uh, so we would have to factor those students out. Um, so we presume that that would uh create uh some reduction in some classes at the elementary level. Uh, yes, you're correct, but students would not be in on Wednesday. Uh, and then uh we're also looking at uh ways to, as extensively as possible. I allow those children to remain with their classroom cohort. Uh, so that there is not perhaps what you consider to be the uh normal movement in the school. Uh, and that'll help us both uh from a a point of context standpoint and from a physical uh distancing standpoint.
Okay, so I think I think we would need to. I I think that would require a. I, I think that would require a, a revote then because what we were, I, I think there was a, and perhaps that was a mistake in the, or, an unanticipated thing in the motion, you know, originally, uh, I had originally proposed different levels where you would go back full, you know, elementary. Um, but what I think we, what I think we said, in that motion was had a pretty clear expectation that although I think a hundred is not the correct number, that's what passed and at a hundred, there would be a fifty fifty arrangement for everyone. We, we talked about making distinctions and that wasn't supported in the final motion. We al- also have the, the situation now, I think becomes more critical where, at least before, um, there was, there was an opportunity for, kids of all ages to be in school at least half the time. If we reached that, um, that twenty to one hundred cases. And I said at the time, may, I, I said at the time, we're setting up a situation of less than twenty cases for a full return. And it's, it's unattainable and it's, it's unrealistic and it's not, it's, I don't know if it's going to happen even after a vaccine until we reach a time that we're just not counting anymore. It's, it, it's a such an extraordinarily low number. So what we're faced with now is looking at a situation where, seventh, eighth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders will not see the inside of a classroom at all, until we're down to twenty, which I would say there is no hope of that this year even with a vaccine. Um, I, um, hopeful that maybe so, I, it's just, it's not realistic and, uh, we, we went from, I, I believe because it's twenty over a two week period, I think it is a stricter return to school metric than any place in the, equal or tied to the strictest full return metric versus anywhere. It's not in the middle, it's not a balanced approach. But before where you could say, well, at least kids are in school half the time. Now, a lot of kids will not see the inside of the classroom and I think that makes it much more critical what we look at next week, if we're going to do this. Um, what I've heard so far is, is limited as this is a new proposal. And I look forward to hearing what, um, you know, what people have to share with me out in the public, but I'm hearing more, I'm hearing more concern with, than support when it comes to the, um, the older kids. Although I think people maybe like the idea with elementary, I think there's maybe science has supports. I think especially the younger, the age, the less transmission, um, I think. But I'm certainly not, at this point, not, not sold that we're, I, I think we, we might be able to have better program delivery the way that, that is proposed here, but it may not be, I might have, rather have second best program delivery, to have all kids have their turn in the classroom if we're not, if COVID is so high that we're not in a full return. And also, I, regardless of, regardless of what exactly is done with, with metrics, next week, I, I, I hope there's, uh, I hope there's an understanding that while there has been perhaps a bit, of a improvement in Brown County over the last few days, that we are in a ridiculously elevated COVID situation. And the hospitals are failing and it's very dangerous right now. And I, I was hoping on October twelfth that we wouldn't, you know, that we, I, I, what I was really hoping is we might be down to, three or four hundred and be talking about a downward trend and so, you know. But I do think, I think those are my points. First of all, I don't know where, I don't know if there's going to be public support for certain grades to not return to school at all this year. And, um, I'm very confident that, that that twenty number will not be reached this year. So that's, that's concerning, that's concerning to me.
Steve, could you or somebody on the team, um, maybe, I know that you had the, the challenges to the blending learning and you kind of, um, touched on that, but maybe give some more thought into what went into, uh, obviously, you know, those transition grades being in all the time, basically, you know, giving a lot to a couple of grade levels and none to others versus making it, equitable where every student comes one or two days a week. What was the, the rationale behind that?
Well, to be honest with you, one of the things that they struggle with at the secondary level is that you have lots of kids involved in lots of classes that often cross grade levels. Uh, and so, uh, if you look at models that other districts have proposed and some have tried, where maybe one grade level comes in one day, you've got ninth on Monday, tenth on Tuesday, eleventh on Wednesday. Uh, what we heard from those districts was that that was very difficult for the teachers because, uh, they would have, many teachers would have some children in class multiple days a week, um, but also have children online those same days. Uh, and so trying to teach the kids that were present, plus trying to engage the students that were, uh, online, uh, was very challenging for those teachers. Uh, and so, uh, again, part of what we've done is, is, um, trying to learn, uh, from what, uh, other districts have done. Uh, and trying to better understand from them, um, where the challenges lie. So that was one model that was considered. And again, was, uh, deemed to be fairly problematic, um, for our teachers to try to engage with students who are both offline and online simultaneously. Uh, and so, uh, in the end, knowing that that was a, a major impediment to trying to get kids in, uh, some kids in e- each day like that. Uh, then, uh, from a social emotional standpoint, uh, the team took a deeper dive on that transition point, uh, for our sixth and ninth graders and how important it is to get them engaged, uh, with learning and with the faculty and with the campus. Um, and for many of those kids having never set foot in there, uh, that that's particularly trying for them because they don't have any relationships to base their, their engagement on. And so that was, that was that balance, uh, that went in, you know, I'll, I'll agree with Andrew, you know, it's tough, uh, to set the, the, perhaps the goal so far out, uh, for many of our kids, uh, at those seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve levels. It was just difficult to find an optimal way to do that, um, for all kids at the high school level.
Are you, do you, is there, i- i- is there any, i- is there anything fueling this discussion? Th- that includes, um, people holding a serious belief that a rate of twenty cases per hundred thousand people total in two weeks, is legitimately reasonably possible this year? Or is there, or is there a clear understanding of people proposing this that, it probably means no return at all for these grades? So I think if there's-
To be honest with you, Andrew, we didn't look at gating criteria because remember, we, we treated these as two separate issues. Um, the challenge to the team was, I asked them, what is the optimal way to move children from offsite instruction, through blended to onsite instruction irrespective of the gates? So if we have children that are, are fully offsite right now in an online environment, and we want to bring them back into a blended environment, what is the best way to do that? So we, we weren't looking at the gates per se as part of the rationale for it. And so this group said, early learners, that splitting them, having them in half days or this cohort this day, this cohort this day, um, based on the feedback that we got from other districts, based on the feedback that we got from our teachers, was that we would be best, uh, we would serve those children best by bringing them in those four days a week. Um, at the secondary level, uh, again, irrespective of the gating criteria, but looking at the secondary components, right? The facial coverings, the hand washing, uh, the sanitization, the physical distancing, um, and trying to conform to those, uh, then that determination was made for the secondary students, um, to focus on our, our transition students first. So it wasn't done, uh, with, with the, uh, consideration of when we would move to onsite, but simply the progression from offsite through blended to onsite.
But there is a, there is a, I, I think the, the intertwine, and I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that. Because there is a, there certainly is a difference because after October twelfth, I think the general public probably felt that Green Bay's decision was that there was going to be a fifty fifty model that would, you know, that would kick in and at least kids would be in school half the time. Um, I don't, um, I mean, I appreciate the, you know, if, if you went to the work groups and said, what's the best way to accommodate having some, some kids in the building? I don't deny that that is, when, when the question is asked that way, it, it, it's, um, it's efficient, it, um, there's, I'm, I'm not, but I, I don't, I don't think it will be, I, I don't think it will be received well and, uh, by the public, either, either by groups favoring, either by people who favor a more permissive return or by people who favor a stricter return. I'm, it's just, I'm, I'm too worried about kids who will essentially have no chance to, no chance to see the inside of a, of a school at all. Um, at least, at least the rest of, um, it's at least the rest of this year. Um, how are, are, aren't there, are there neighboring school districts that did like, group A, group B have, did it not go well? I mean, I know there were some places, some people that we probably talked to that tried it.
There are, and, uh, you'll find that most of them have, uh, moved away, uh, particularly at the elementary level with the cohorts, uh, and moved to either onsite or offsite for their elementary, uh, students.
That's right, when I sup, I sup, you know, I support, uh, you know, elementary, uh, but what about secondary? Are they still doing fifty fifties? I mean, uh, right, right now, hopefully some of them have seen the COVID, growing exponentially and, and moved off, but when they were in hybrids, did it, we had some neighbors that were in hybrids, right?
Yes.
Did it, did it work? Did it not work? Did it not last long enough to know if it worked?
Um, one of the big things that they shared with us, so right now, most of them are either all onsite or all offsite. Uh, and one of the things that, that they shared was the almost impossibility of being able to physically distance, uh, when you have all your kids on campus. Um, you just have to, to, uh, come into it with the caveat and the knowledge that you are not going to be able to do that. Uh, and that with that many students on campus, um, you're going to wrestle with everything from facial coverings to hand hygiene, to having adequate time to sanitize the facilities, uh, uh, throughout the day. So, uh, that secondary set of, of, uh, CDC indicators, um, are just challenging to do, um, when you have everybody, uh, on campus. Uh, and then again, uh, you may have heard this term, uh, and in particular, if you've got kids that are at the, the college level, sorry, students at the college level, um, high flex, right? So high flex is this idea, which, uh, we've talked extensively about at the, the big five meetings, which is that, uh, uh, teachers have, um, students who are physically present in their classroom, but also remotely present. Um, and one of the enormous challenges with high flex is having, uh, the capacity, uh, to actually, uh, uh, video your course. Uh, and, uh, in most cases, most schools at the K twelve level don't have that. Uh, and so if you have some students who are on campus and some students who are at home, um, the only way for the teacher to teach in a high flex model is to literally sit behind their desk, um, with their, their laptop queued up, uh, and looking over the top of their laptop at the students so that they can still have, um, direct contact with the students that are on screen. Um, the feedback that we've gotten from faculty who try to teach in that model is it's very ineffective and very inefficient. Um, so the feedback that we're getting from schools that have tried cohorting, where they have this high flex where some kids are on, some kids are off, uh, is that the instructors are telling them, um, that it's not working well. So that was one of the things that, uh, when our team looked at that and said, uh, you know, not only, how do we want to make sure we keep kids safe? Um, but how do we make sure that we maintain the integrity of the education process? Um, that one came up over and over again.
Um, S- Steve, uh, uh, one comment that I want to make and then, uh, a question. Uh, first, when it comes to elementary students being a hundred percent in person, um, understand why that's attractive. One of my concerns there is the, the differing, uh, facilities that we have in our elementary buildings. And especially when I think about our older facilities and our inner city schools. Um, you know, I, I've been to, to Fort Howard, I've been to Tank, I've been to Nicolay, and some of those classrooms are incredibly small, uh, you know, the, the buildings are older. Um, and so, you know, when I think about that entire school being back, you know, our kids who are in disadvantaged situations are going to be even further disadvantaged by an inability to social distance. So just something to think about, uh, nothing to react to right now. Um, question that I have is, you know, I think the team, and I've had some concerns about the blended model being effective in terms of the, the model and the type of instruction that's given. Um, but what happens if, uh, the board, you know, because we'll vote on this in, in two weeks, if we came back and said, you know, understand and appreciate that this is what's considered the best model. Uh, but we, you know, decide to vote on a, a, a model that lets more kids get back in school. To Andrew's point, those, uh, seventh, eighth graders, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders.
Absolutely. Remember, our job is to, uh, take, uh, the charge that you give us, uh, to apply our best thinking to it, um, and to bring back to you a recommendation that we think is, is most educationally sound, uh, for the kids. So, uh, we know that as a board, uh, your intentionality is to bring kids back to campus. Uh, that was the charge that, that I gave to the teams that were working on this. Um, they put their best thinking behind that. Uh, keep in mind though, as board members, um, you represent the community. Uh, and as we bring plans to you, your job, uh, if you will, in your seats is to look at those plans, to critique them, uh, to help us understand, uh, not only what works, uh, as you see it as a community representative, but also, uh, things that you think may need to be changed, uh, in those recommendations. It's our job then to go back, uh, and put those changes in place so that we can bring forward, uh, a new version of it that gives you the opportunity to meet, uh, the demands that you have for it, and then again allows you to vote on it.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, Christina?
Steve, could you talk about how this would work with the teachers, those that are going to be in person and that would be staying with the all virtual students?
Sure, I'll, uh, I'll try to hit this from kind of a high level and just, uh, ask where you need me to dig down a little bit. So, uh, remember that, uh, Terry and our admin team have been working closely with our staff to understand, um, who is unable to return. Um, there are very, very clear cut legal rationales for helping us, uh, determine, uh, who is unable to come back to campus. Uh, and for those, uh, folks that are unable to come back to campus, uh, then we work with them, uh, to ensure that there's an opportunity for them to continue to work with kids, which kids. Um, that's where we'll go out and we'll ask the parents, uh, after we've determined which model works, um, and which gating criteria work for you, uh, we will share that with our parents. Uh, and then we will ask our parents to enroll if they choose to stay all virtual. It could be five kids, five hundred, five thousand, we don't know yet. Um, when we do know that number, uh, we'll know how many of them are first, second, fifth, eighth, twelfth graders, um, and which courses they need at the secondary level. Our goal then will be to align our staff who are unable to return to campus with the needs of the children who choose to stay in a virtual environment. Um, in a perfect world, those will align. Um, in an imperfect world, which is probably what we live in, uh, we may have to reach out to teachers who are planning to come back to campus um, and ask them if they are, uh, able to teach online, continue to do that for the remainder of the year. If we don't have enough, uh, staff in that unable category. Um, if we have too many staff in the unable category, uh, then we have to make sure that we're able to meet the, uh, needs of the kids in our- then we have to make sure that we're able to meet the needs of the kids in our classroom. And we may have to move some staff around in order to do that. So a big part of what we'll have to do between now and when we do come back to blended is both determine student and parent choice, align that with staff availability, and then fill gaps with it.
Thank you, Steve. I just have one, a follow-up and not to put you on the spot here, but what would a teacher have to provide to teach in that virtual, that virtual environment? Is that a?
Sure. If the, if the teachers in the unable category, they've either gone through the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA process, or they've gone through the FMLA process, and Terry and Melissa shepherd that. And so there's, we work very closely with the GBEA so that they can help work with their members. We certainly want to make sure that we're respectful for our staff and try to meet their needs. You know, like I said, the, the big challenge becomes if there isn't alignment with both the number of kids that are out, the number of staff that we need to teach them, that imbalance could go either way. And then we'll need to work with our staff to make sure that we can, we can level that up.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That's wonderful. Thank you.
And maybe just, just to reiterate, right? So parents have that ability to choose that online option. We've talked about whether or not there's an on-ramp, depending on what happens as we move through the spring. And I think another important thing to remember, which, which I think Eric, it made me think of it when you brought that up is if, if you are a child who's been in a third grade class in one of our elementary schools and you come back onsite, you may not have your third grade teacher that you had initially. That teacher may either be unable to come back to work onsite, or that teacher may, due to that balance, that imbalance, may have been assigned to an online section. So we're going to have to ask for flexibility from our parents and our students and recognize that they may have different teachers, either in an online environment or in an onsite environment as we move through that blended process. Unfortunately, it's probably going to be a little bit messy.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
I have a lot of notes, so I'm going to try to get through this as best as I can. To your last points, Steve, my daughter had three different math teachers last year in eighth grade, so we figured it out, right? We got through it. I'm wondering about, so you, you made a statement, I want to understand what you're saying. So there's going to be an ask about who wants to be in, staying in the virtual system. Then you're going to determine if you're going to do the cohort or the hybrid? Is that how that's going to go?
No, I'm sorry. No, what we'll determine, once we've figured out who wants to be in the online environment, then it will be a process of aligning staff.
Okay.
So the things that we need to know, in order for us to make sure that we have a plan that's viable, is how many kids want to be offsite and how many in online and how many want to be onsite. So knowing those numbers, I, you know, pick, pick any one of our small elementary schools, right? If, if they only have a couple of kids who want to return to campus and most of their students want to stay online, we may have to partner them up with another school so that we can make sure that there's an onsite teacher available for them. So for us, the, the first, most important thing we'll need to know is which children are choosing to remain online for the remainder of the year or until we reach the next on-ramp. So, and that'll depend on, on that timing of that move to blended. So once we know that, then we can try to align them as best as we can with their current teachers. Obviously, that would be our number one goal is to put kids with the teachers that they have right now. They've already formed relationships and engagement, and if we can do that in an ideal world, we would. But we're going to have to make some choices as we go through that.
Okay. So I'm with Andrew on, and I have heard from, once the plan was out there, looking at some of the class levels that aren't included in the hybrid plan. These students, as we know, and as we were discussing earlier, they are still students that are needing support. Evidence of the, you know, we have doubled the amount of grade failure. So that tells you right there that they need more support. When I think about that, and I think about the fact that they are, those grade levels are still subjected to the mental health issues, isolation, the sedentary state of virtual learning and the issues that come with that, right? The physical wellbeing and, and social, emotional wellbeing. I really struggle with thinking about leaving those kids out because I know we talk a lot about science and following the science and research, but the science and research also tells you that this is doing harm. The virtual state is doing harm. So when I hear about grade levels being left out, that's, that's hard for me to imagine. And I, so I'm hoping that we can figure out something for them. I, I don't see that as going over well, and more importantly, I don't see that as being equity.
Well, you're absolutely right, Rhonda. There is no ideal solution for this. And, and you could choose to bring all of them back, just like you are with the elementary kids, in full knowledge that we're not going to be able to meet those secondary CDC requirements and that, to be honest with you, if you brought all of the students back at the high school level, you would have to literally just stipulate that you are not going to socially distance because it's not physically possible with the square footage in our building. So you're absolutely right. There is no ideal solution. And compromises have to be made. And so the, the team, as we talk through this, tried to make compromises that they thought would be as close as possible to meeting as many of the benchmarks as they could. So do they meet the social, emotional needs that the kids have by being on campus? Absolutely not. Do they provide the students that are on campus a greater opportunity for meeting the other CDC requirements? Yeah, they do. So it really winds up in the end coming down to where you want to make compromises in the system. And so we selected one set of criteria. Certainly you can provide direction to us if you'd like to see us move in another, another direction.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear and that it was my, my point of view with that. I do have some other questions. What about the students with disabilities? Are they in these models? Where do they fit in?
That's a great question, and, and I, and I went through that relatively quickly, but the first students that we'll be bringing back will be our students with disabilities. We're already working on planning for that. The highest need children are the first on our return list. And so that plan is already underway. Those kids will come back before we hit this blended model. And so our students with disabilities, our English learners, are some of the children that are first on the list. And, and in all likelihood will wind up being back perhaps significantly before the students in this particular regular model, the general ed model. And when you look at the students at the high school level, so students in 7th, 8th, the middle school, 10th, 11th, 12th at the high school, you will be far more likely to see students with disabilities in those five grade levels return before their general ed peers, just like we're going to see those kids now return before their, their general ed peers do.
Okay. Do you have a timeline or, or you're saying prior, but is there?
Yes, we're, we're actually working right now on plans to bring our highest need children back. We've got some kids in particular that receive occupational, physical therapy, speech and language therapy. Those are very, very difficult to do offsite. So we're in the process right now of re-establishing their classes and preparing to bring them back to school. Some of those kids will be back in before we get to the end of the calendar year, and other kids will be coming back in shortly after we round the corner into 2021.
Okay. I also have questions. Some of these questions were sent to the board the last couple of days, and I just would like some clarification because there were some, basically, there were claims, and I want to know if this is actually factual or what it is. So there was a claim made that the Green Bay area public school district does not have PPE school modifications or enough space to hold up to 27 students six feet apart. So do we, I mean, we're talking about a blended model. Do we have enough PPE school modifications or enough space?
PPE, yes.
Hybrid model?
Yep. Two of those are easy. PPE, we have enough. Pete and his team have done a wonderful job making sure that we have enough facial coverings in place. They have physical barriers that they have created that we'll be able to use in classrooms and other common areas. The other end of that, we ask if there's enough space. Absolutely not. Again, that's a compromise that we're going to have to make. If we're going to bring our, all of our elementary kids back in four days a week, it's unlikely that you are going to find a majority of our kids six feet apart. We just simply don't have the physical space to do that. So that's a compromise that we're going to have to make. And there is a third question in there too, Rhonda. Where is the third one? Oh, I, like ventilation, those types of things?
Well, that was actually a question is, that was going to be another one of my questions, and that was another question in the email about ventilation.
Yeah, so Mike and
That look like?
Yep. Mike and his team have been working on that, trying to make sure that we've upgraded where we can so that to the greatest extent possible, moving as much fresh air through our buildings on a regular basis. We know that from research that we've done that even creating a negative air pressure by venting outside and then cracking windows forces a movement of fresh air into the building. It has an impact on heat bills and things like that. But that's also something that they're looking at as an additional avenue to ensure that we've got as much fresh air in those buildings as possible.
And how would you know if you have enough subs and custodians?
That is a very good question, and we will struggle with that based on what we're hearing from other districts. Substitute teachers are in short supply in a good year. And right now, it's important to keep in mind that many of our substitute teachers are retired teachers. So they're in a vulnerable age group, and, and we know from our colleagues across the state that in many cases, their substitute teacher pools are substantially reduced. We know of a couple of districts that have elevated pay for subs and still struggle. As a matter of fact, two of them did it and didn't move the needle at all and get a single additional sub in their pool. We're tracking and, and I'm working with our team, and you'll start to see this in the dashboard shortly after we come back from Thanksgiving recess. But we're tracking for you so that you'll be able to see it in a daily basis in real time, the number of people that have tested positive and are out on quarantine, and the number of those who've had close contact and are out on quarantine. And keep in mind, these aren't people that have had this experience inside school. These are people that through community spread have either contracted the virus or are quarantined because of close contact with someone who has. But that definitely impacts our ability to deliver services. That's, as you indicated, teaching and custodial, but it's also food service, secretarial, administrative. And so you'll be able to see the number of people that are out on quarantine on a daily basis.
And then what about the claim in that same email that we don't have enough money for these changes?
Which changes are they? Do you know which they're referring to?
I'm not entirely sure. I'm assuming school, school modifications and PPE. But I guess even aside from being specific, do we have something to pad any extra whatever facilities we would need?
So we, we've been fortunate at this point in time that funding has been available for us as we purchase PPE and other types of equipment like that. So we talked about some of the poly that we're using to create some of the barriers and things like that. So we've received some support from the federal and state government to do that. Obviously, that, that's been a huge benefit for us as we try to stock up and be ready to go. Your last question, space, we're not going to have additional space. There, there isn't an ability for us to create that space. We simply don't have that, those additional classrooms or square footage in the district. And so, you know, there, there's it's not that there's not enough money to do that. That's just simply not, not feasible for us, right? So, so knowing that, we're working with the facilities that we have. And like I said, you know, at the elementary level, the team came back and said, as we look at all the factors and we have to make compromises in order to develop a system that's going to be functional, one of the key compromises that was made at the elementary level was that, that physical distancing.
Um, but are you confident then? I mean, if we don't know the numbers of families that would choose the all virtual, we don't, we don't really know what that looks like, right?
No.
It's, it's entirely possible that we could actually have numbers that make quite a dent in the capacity in the, in the buildings. We don't really know that answer until we ask it. And when, when do you anticipate asking or putting that ask out?
When we know what we're asking. So we need to know what plan the board's willing to move forward with, and we need to know what gating criteria the board is willing to move forward with.
So can I touch on that personally though? And maybe that's really what I need to talk about is doesn't it matter if you have less students coming in? If you have, if, you know, we've, we've heard from a lot of people, we have, right? We've been hearing from a lot of people. We have a, in the grand scheme of things, we have a, a lot more families we haven't heard from. So isn't it possible that that determines cohort or a hybrid? It, it would for me because then you're looking at, you have, maybe they surprise us and, and they, there's a lot of people who just absolutely are not interested in coming back. Or maybe it's completely opposite. And now we have a different, entirely different number to work with when we're talking about who's going to be in the cohort and the hybrid. And so I guess personally for me, when I think about that and to the points that I made prior about not leaving any grade levels out in, in some semblance of returning to school, it matters how many, or does it not matter how many students are actually choosing virtual? Because then your work, you know who you're working with when you're talking about the size of the classrooms, the modification of the classrooms and the social distancing possibilities, right?
Sure, you're absolutely correct. So, you know, let's think about that, right? At the elementary level right now, I'm saying we're not going to be able to socially distance. If in a perfect world, I talked about fit before, if, if half of our elementary children decided to stay in a virtual model and it just so happened that it was half of every, of the children in every single classroom, we'd be a lot closer to the, the appropriate physical distance based on the CDC requirement. It's also unlikely it's going to line up like that. So we may have some classes that are appropriately physically distanced and, and some that aren't because some schools may have an imbalance of children who choose to stay online or come to school in person, making it hard for us to divide them up equally between the classes that are left. The challenge that we have is that, I mean, you could be in an endless loop there because parents are going to be, it's going to be difficult. I mean, I think about it for myself as a parent. It's difficult to say, yes, I would send my child to school, or no, I wouldn't, unless I know what I'm sending them to school to do. And so that's why we're coming to you and saying, this is the, the hybrid model that we propose and asking for either validation for it, or if there's need to change it to get those changes done. We need to know that before we ask parents because parents are going to struggle to say yes or no unless they know what it is that they're saying yes or no to.
Can you reiterate the, the class levels that would not be included in the hybrid model?
Right now, we're looking at including six and nine and transitioning into seven, eight, 10, 11, 12 as we move through this process. So they would not initially be included.
So, sorry, who, what does that, okay, so that's new, but what does, what does that mean? And unless you're going to put, like, would you have, would you have metrics for when you start adding grades?
We haven't gone that far yet, Andrew. That's something that we talked about, and, and part of it was making sure we were moving in the right direction first.
Christina.
Can I, can I just finish up and then I, I just?
Just a couple more?
Yep, just a couple more. It's just really hard to hear that in that area that you just mentioned, again, that those, we have doubled the grade failure. That's just really, it's really hard to hear that and to know that they are not considered in that model. It sounds very much like the cohort isn't possible logistically. Is that fair to say? I mean, it just isn't fair. I mean, it just isn't possible. So I don't even personally know why we would consider that. If it's not possible, it's not going to If it's not possible, it's not going to happen. So looking at the hybrid, then we are looking at leaving out those very, obviously very vulnerable students. Um, and I just really hope that we all think about that. I don't know off the top of my head what the answer is. After this conversation, I will look into that more and think about that and but, you know, in the same meeting, hearing that those are the students that are, and I don't know the number yet because we didn't get that. What the, that number of students, whatever it is though, that they're doing twice as bad academically, which you know means more than likely they're struggling social emotionally. I'm, I'm pretty, I feel pretty confident saying that. So I just, anyway.
You're right, Rhonda. The ideal is onsite. That's the ideal. That's where we want to get to. Everything less than onsite is going to include a compromise.
Christina?
I just want to reiterate, I think that we have to remember that we can plan. I feel like I say this every school board meeting. We can plan all we want, but we can only plan so far until we gain and gather more information. So we can look at this model and you're right, Rhonda. If I have a seventh grader, I want her to go back to school every single day. But if we looked at a phased approach, no one, I don't, I don't hear anyone saying that these students that aren't in the plan right now, which they are, that they're not going to get the support. What I'm hearing Steve say that this is a way that we can prioritize students and as COVID rates get better and people are social distanced and as we get the vaccine and as we have hopefully more money coming from the federal and state government for contact tracing and, and testing. And if there are more parents who decide to keep their kids home, and maybe that means we can open it up to the entire secondary population of students. So I think what's important for us to remember is everyone here is disturbed by the grades, by the stress, by the emotional toll that this is taking, by the impact this has on teachers, by the suicide rate, by anxiety and depression. Everybody agrees on that. And the, the issue is, is that how do we get to where we need to be given the current reality? And until we know, I don't see how we can really plan too far ahead until we know what parents are choosing. And that may mean, to your point, that more kids in high school can come back sooner than what we're currently seeing in front of us.
And I'm concerned about the word prioritize though, and I think we should be readily available and expecting that there, there will be parents who hear that and say, that's true, but.
Right, but we do prioritize somebody because we can't send 3,000 kids back to Preble and shove them all in one building. We can't do that unless we want to throw our hands in the air and say, we don't, we're not going to follow the guidelines.
We can't, but I guess we should be prepared for families to say, well, we gotta go.
Yeah, I mean, I, and yeah, I mean, I just said, I'm one of those people. I have a seventh grade daughter. I would love for her to be in sixth grade this year so she could be in. So yes, it is going to require continued sacrifice and flexibility for every single person. It's not going to be ideal because this situation is not ideal. It's a disaster.
And I'm just, I guess I, when I say those parents are going to go, they might literally leave.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's get back to questions. We'll go to Dawn and then to Noah.
My turn, sorry. Steve, has there been any discussion? I mean, we don't have an equal distribution in our schools, right? I mean, we have some schools that are underpopulated. We have some schools that are overpopulated. When we look at that physical distancing, has, and this will not be popular, but has there been discussion about moving kids between their home school to an underutilized school in order to more evenly distribute the number of kids in those classrooms, making social distancing more possible?
Yes, we have talked about that. And again, keep in mind, you know, back to Rhonda's original assertion there, right? We won't know who's chosen which model until we get out there and we have a model that they can choose from and then they make that election. We may find that a school that prior to this was overcrowded, if you will, or more crowded, let's say that, was more crowded, may not be after we determine who's going to be online for the remainder of the year. And then again, with a small school that may only have a single section at a given grade level, it may be impossible for us to, to have those kids remain with their, their grade level teacher in online format because that teacher may have to serve the kids that are there. So we're already looking at this need for students and families to be flexible in the online environment as we transition into the blended because they're unlikely in many cases to be able to keep their online teacher right now if they have onsite responsibilities. And so that the next step or the next correlation, if you will, in that is to look at the onsite children and determine whether or not there's the opportunity to move them. I will tell you, I think that that's something that we have to also make plain to parents before we go out because that may also influence parents. If, if parents have an expectation that their children are going to be in their school of residence and then find out they're not, that may be a tipping point for them. They prefer online versus going to a different school. So I think those are the kinds of things that we have to think through before we ask those questions because I think they could have a very profound influence on parents' choice.
Thank you.
And maybe if I could just offer right before Noah goes, you know, keep in mind, this is going to be an evolutionary process. This isn't a process that has an answer. You know, there's no capital T truth here. What we have is an ability to make the best choices that we can and we will make the best recommendations to you that we can with the information that we have available to us at the time. We know that's going to change. And so just like we came back to you this time, having learned from the last time when we had a proposal, it's likely before we get to the end of the school year that we will have new proposals for you to consider as we learn more about this process.
Oh, go ahead, Noah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, okay, so, um, thank you for the, the presentation and the work that went here. But I do have some very serious issues. I don't understand why we would put, I, I understand your, the desire of, of the people put together this plan to preserve adequate distance. I think that makes a lot of sense. I understand that concern. I don't understand why the solution to that that was come up with was to just send back sixth and ninth graders. Cycle them through. If you're having one a week, why don't you just cycle the grades through? I get there's a little bit more you are trying to engage with at the sixth and ninth grade levels. But to say to one group, yeah, okay, well, you can come back for a four day week and to the rest, sorry, there's, there's nothing for you is unacceptable at best. I mean, in my situation, I.
No, I, no, I want to interrupt you just for a second because we, that was addressed already when we said that we wanted to figure out what was the best educational model. And so that was the decision that was made, why that was made. So I just want to point that out because that was asked once already. So you can continue.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. President. Um, so in that, in that same vein, I think, I guess I will say it this way. I think it would be worth it to look at perhaps cycling different grades through if that, if there's a way that that can, can be done. I think that's a, a piece that should be looked at. I definitely understand that compromises need to be made, but yeah, I was just as concerned with prioritize, with the prioritizing of certain students. I mean, we, we all know this is a, this is a mess, like, this is a mess and we're all trying, everyone here is trying to work through that. Okay, I'm not trying to like say you guys aren't. I know that. That's not my point at all. But I, I, I'm having a hard time with this particular plan. I think, I think it leaves a large chunk of secondary students completely in the dust. The way it handles elementary is, is interesting. I don't actually necessarily disagree with that. I think it's a, I think it's a good piece to, to look at. But le- leaving behind, you know, that many grades is something that a lot of people have concerns with. I, even I got emails and that's how you know something is interesting is when I get emails. So I think something else needs to come up. I hope the board looks at, looks at something different because this plan, I just don't see it as being feasible. Thank you, Mr. President.
But Noah, I'll just, I'll offer that the cycling issue is the high flex issue. So if you think about that, if there's a biology class and it's got, you know, multiple grade levels in there and some of the kids are in on Tuesday and some of the kids are in on Wednesday, none of the kids are in on Friday or whatever it happens to be because of the grade level. On the days when kids are in there, there are going to be kids who have that class who are at home. And for the teacher to teach effectively, they have to be able to teach in that high flex model. And the only way that we have found high flex to work effectively is in classrooms that are specifically designed for it. Multiple cameras with multiple angles, in many cases an engineer running that. And, and we haven't found a way that we can do that given, given our current capacity. So you're absolutely right. Cycling would be ideal. Unfortunately, we just aren't set up for it.
Laura, go ahead.
Um, I'm pretty torn about this. I, 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 you know, it doesn't, there's parts of this that don't feel fair. Um, but on the other hand, I want, I want a plan that has the best chance of success. So, um, there are just so many variables. Uh, and I, I, um, you know, it's, it's just feels like chaos. We're trying to pull together the, the strands to make a plan that works for as many kids as possible. And then, you know, adapt after that. But I have a very specific question. What happens in a class or in a school when you just don't have enough teachers or subs? Like you just can't get them?
So I, so the, I think the hypothetical here is I'm hearing it that is we bring kids back. They're in class and now we simply don't have enough adults to fill those roles, correct? So we're seeing that already and, and I know from talking to colleagues around the state. And we actually have some schools in the area and some districts in the area that have made that pivot from in-person or hybrid to off-site. In many cases, district just to the east of us made that decision last week. I, in the evening with an announcement that they'd be moving online the next day because they didn't have enough staff available to be in the classes. That's the challenge, right? We can teach and kids can learn provided that we have teachers and students. If we're missing either one of those, that dynamic doesn't take place. And there's no dyad for that to function. And if we don't have enough faculty, we're going to wind up being in the same position that those other districts are, which is pivoting from blended to off-site. I, you know, one of the things that I'll share with you is an enormous challenge for us is we can function to the extent that we can, clearly not perfect. We can, we can function right now because we have some wonderful partners in the community. They're able, able to provide assistance for us. I'm thinking about the YMCA. I'm thinking about the Boys and Girls Club. I, and, and if we're in a fluid situation where we're going back and forth between the models, we're going to struggle because those support organizations won't be able to stay in the current model that they are. And then we're going to struggle for places for our kids to go when they're, when they're offsite. And so one of the things that we're really trying to do as part of this process is trying to make sure that we don't put our children and our families in that position. And that's one of the reasons again, as we were going through this process where we made a compromise at the elementary level and looked to this idea of bringing kids back four days a week because while there will be a compromise in that, that physical distancing, we also know that, that having them in school only say a couple of days a week in a cohort will put an enormous amount of stress on our community partners to actually provide support for those kids the other three days a week.
I, you know, I, I guess basically I don't want to be, I don't want to be in the position of promising things that we can't deliver. Um, and, and, you know, our reality is pretty harsh right now and we're all about to have holidays and you know, every indication is that after that happens, we could see another spike. And right now we already have, you know, horizontal, or I'm sorry, vertical growth in the numbers. So, um, there's just a lot to take in on this plan. That's all I have. Thanks.
So just a quick reminder to everyone watching and certainly everyone, you know, on the board, the, the process here. And we talked about this already, but the administration put together a plan that they felt was in the best interest. Uh, this is our work session to discuss this, to ask, ask questions. We now have the next two weeks to gather more feedback, ask more clarifying questions. And then in two weeks at the regular board meeting, we'll vote on this. And that, that ultimately, as Steve mentioned, will be our opportunity to, to give feedback. And if, if we vote to pass this as a model, we'll then start to advertise it and ask for parents' feedback to see if they want to participate in this model eventually or if they want to stay virtual. And then that will, will help to assist with the planning. So process is playing out. I think that we're, we're in a good spot to gather some more feedback and appreciate the, the work the team put into putting together what they felt again was the, the best model in a really terrible situation. So.
If I could just offer too, one of the things that, and I want pretty quick through the slide deck, but if, if you're watching at home or if you have access to it, I'd definitely call your attention to slide number nine on there. Uh, one of the things that, that the team talks about on there is that we recognize that there's going to be some unique challenges for those students in grade seven, eight, 10, 11, 12. I, and determining how we can do co-curricular activities. Those are things that are connected to class and how we can use our student services team to meet social emotional needs of kids is something that, that team took very seriously and I would be remiss if I did not point that.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, yeah, I just want to quick, just quickly echo, I think just the questions that have been asked and the tone and tenor of this conversation really highlights the fact that we, there's just not a way to design the best system that's going to meet the needs of all kids. And I know that's really hard for a lot of people, including the people in this meeting and people that are in our schools. And I, I do have one, one specific question. Have you looked at, and I guess it goes back to your comment about if we have, we don't have enough staff and then we're having to send kids home and then that sort of disrupts the whole system. Because one of the things I feel that virtual education provides at least consistency for families. So the families know their kids are going to be in virtual education. They have a plan. There's none of this calling, you know, a night before or two days before saying we're closed for two weeks and all of that kind of stuff. And so I, so I have a concern about the, about the, the staff and, and what that, how that will affect. And I think it also, for me, just says that, you know, if we open, if we open when our numbers are too high, we're just going to be, you know, we're just not going to be able to sustain that. And I, you know, the community case burden is what I'm referring to with the numbers. Have you looked at, I'll get to my specific question. Have you, have you looked at our subpool? And how many people in our subpool are also in the subpool for our neighboring districts? Because one of my concerns is that I know we share a lot of subs. And if our, the districts that are in session right now, and it's not even all of them right now, if they're having trouble getting subs, then what happens when we pile in there and our demand for subs is, is just sort of explodes the system and nobody has, has enough subs? Um, anyway, I don't know if you've looked at that or if that's a real problem or I'm just making that up.
It is a real problem and while it may not have been a, a real problem here yet, we know that that's been a problem in other areas of the state. And it's because, as you said, many people are substitute teachers in multiple neighboring geographic districts. I, and, and depending on the demographic profile of your substitute teachers, you may be in a position where there's a significantly reduced number. I can tell you right now. Um, I can tell you right now, uh, Southern Door, um, was really scrambling to find enough substitute teachers. Uh, we actually worked with them because we have some substitute teachers who, uh, because we are not physically in session, um, we're not, uh, as engaged as they have been in the past. Um, so we actually opened up, uh, our subpool, the Southern Door, to give them the opportunity both to fill their classrooms and also for our folks, uh, to work. I, and, and obviously that's working right now. If we come back in session, um, we're likely going to need those folks back. So that's going to cause a, a challenge for Southern Door. So I, there may very well be this geographical shortage that you're talking about. We may not know that until we get to that point.
Do we have, um, uh, I mean, is that something that's available easily? I don't want anybody doing a, um, data dig, but in terms of our subs and, and, uh, how many schools are signed up for? And then also I would be interested in, and again, maybe this is a privacy thing, but, uh, and maybe just a general idea, what percentage of our subs are over 60 or, um, uh, 65? Um, cause I, I, like I said, that's a, that's a real concern for me. And I just think the more, um, specific information we have around that, the better.
Well, I see Terry jumped on, so I'm going to defer and let her answer that.
I have some of that information, Brenda, although not all of the information. We can see for our subpool, those districts that use frontline absence management, we can see our subs that are picking up jobs in other districts and are employed by those other districts that also use the frontline absence management system. We also have substitutes that indicate their availability as they are, um, confirming their employment with our district and their intent to remain engaged in substitute teaching in our district. They will indicate that they're only available, for example, on Tuesday and Friday. Um, they can set their system preferences that way. We do have, um, data that we can pull around the, um, demographics of our subpool in some categories where we have the information. Um, input, we would not easily be able to identify by age or any other protected, um, information that would be confidential, but we are able in general to pull information around our subpool. We know the number that we typically have in our subpool, and I can tell you that it has drastically decreased this year. The, uh, substitutes that have indicated that they plan on substituting at least 10 or more days, um, with the district has, um, decreased. And, um, again, this is not a new issue. We have had substitute shortages even prior to COVID. So I think I hit on the data points. Please let me know if I missed one that you were asking about, Brenda.
No, thanks, Terry. Those were the two.
Uh, Rhonda and then Andrew.
Um, a couple of questions, um, for Terry, and then I just have a comment. Uh, what are the qualifications, like what criteria, what do you look for, for substitute teacher?
Substitute teachers need to have an associate's degree or higher and, and take a substitute course in order to be able to be licensed as a substitute. And that's the minimum requirements. And then we screen and interview our substitute, um, candidates. We do run, um, our pre-employment drug screens, background checks. Um, we do reference checking. All of those, um, pre-employment requirements apply to our substitutes as well as, um, our regular staff.
Okay. Um, so the federal unemployment through the pandemic is running out in December, I believe, correct? Unless it gets reissued, but as, as it stands, it's, isn't it winding down?
Is what winding down?
Unemployment.
Unemployment. Uh, I believe it's, uh, December 26th.
Um, maybe that's when we see some interest. I don't know. Possible.
What, what was the question, Rhonda? I'm sorry, I missed.
When unemployment is going to be winding down, the pandemic unemployment would be.
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, people need income.
Yeah. The, the unemployment rate right now for the state of Wisconsin is, uh, right around 4% today. So. Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah. So I, I just think there's a, a couple of, um, at the, I, I think there's a couple of variants on cycling that, that are worth looking at. First of all, there's probably, probably a difference between the middle school cycling. If we were to do a six, seven, eight rotation that I would assume that probably happens easier than, than high school. The second thing, it's, you know, it's a little, it's a little outside the box, but if we're, if we're reducing the number of kids in the high schools anyways, it is possible that either a, either a student could go on, on a second day, you'd still have lower numbers in the schools, uh, just thinking out loud here, or you could have perhaps going with a different grade might resolve some of the issues for a, a lot of kids. It's, it's not perfect, but I, I think, I think there's a real, a real chance that of people both who feel stronger about return and who feel stronger about not returning might, both sides might be very um, unsatisfied by, by some of the grades not, not coming back. And there have to be rules for when, I'm not saying rules can never change, but there need to be rules for when people come back. So we, if, I mean, to say that sixth and ninth grade return when we hit the hybrid metric and seventh and eighth and 10th, 11th and 12th don't, uh, I can't go back to constituents and say, well, you know, I voted for this hybrid model in which elementary is back normally, sixth and ninth grade go, and then later, depending how things go, administration will add new people to the group. That's not a decision. We have to, we have to decide with, with rules and metrics when, when people, when people go back. So I would encourage maybe, um, administration to take another look at that if, if, um, identifying with a different grade level makes sense for kids who are in more advanced classes or something could allow us to, to cycle. I, I think that would be better received in the community and probably, probably better for kids, even if maybe not educationally as good. Yes. I, I would, I would concede that, but I think there's other, there's other drawbacks.
Good. Any other final comments on the academic model consideration for Steve and his team? Go ahead, Rhonda.
So more than likely, we are not going to be considering the cohort model. So I'm asking personally individually to don't spend a lot of time on that. It seems like kind of a red herring. Um, I just don't think that's viable. It sounds like it's not. So just my plea. Thank you.
All right. Um, last agenda item for tonight under pandemic update extracurricular and co-curricular considerations.
So you have, uh, in this, uh, let me just back up and tell you essentially, this is the same framework that, uh, um, we use when I, from a mental schema, when we think about, uh, the transition from offsite to blended. Uh, so the question here is, I, uh, what does it look like to bring athletes back on campus? Uh, and I can tell you that we started with this conversation, uh, with the Brown County superintendents. Uh, and we also included in that conversation, superintendents from Manitowoc and Sheboygan, uh, that, uh, also, uh, wrote teams into our conference. Uh, and the conversation was, uh, about, uh, how we go about, uh, to the extent possible, creating a viable season. Uh, while, uh, many of the districts struggled with, uh, allowing any practice or competition before the end of the calendar year. Uh, so after much, much conversation and discussion, uh, a determination was made uh, that, uh, we would, uh, by consensus, uh, start, uh, the seasons on January 4th. Um, for practice, there's a minimum window before competition can begin. Uh, January 12th, January 15th, depending on the sport. Uh, and then obviously there are WIA tournaments, and so that gave us a window, uh, to create a compressed season. Uh, and so that was the, uh, determination that was made. Um, as part of that process, there was a caveat, um, which was if schools, uh, in the Brown County group, uh, or in the conference determined that they would like to start practice earlier and/or schedule non-conference games before the end of the calendar year. Um, there was the latitude to do that. Uh, and, uh, so that was the determination that was made, um, for our winter sport athletes. Uh, unlike fall, where we had the opportunity to transition those students to a season that fell between winter and spring. Uh, there's no alternative for our winter sport athletes. And so, uh, we looked at that, uh, compressed season, uh, which was not something that we considered with our fall athletes, when we, uh, looked at the opportunity uh, to simply time shift them forward into the spring. Um, so therefore we developed that compressed season. Uh, and then the next step in that process is what you see attached to, uh, the document here is when, uh, students come back, uh, to compete, um, what do we need to do to make sure that, uh, they are as safe as possible in that competition? Uh, so without going through all the content and knowing that Tim's here to answer, um, specific questions, uh, that you, uh, may have. Uh, considerations for athletes look the same as they do for academics. Um, and that is can we provide facial coverings? Can we do social distancing? Uh, what do the cleanliness protocols look like? Uh, and just like we considered what would it look like in a classroom, uh, the, uh, ADs and Tim had to look like, look at what would it look like uh, in practice. Um, unlike classrooms, uh, these kids are going to travel. So what is it going to look like when they're on the road? Um, and what do we need to consider there? Uh, and then, uh, in addition to that, uh, which is a little bit different than we have in the classroom, uh, we've got some additional WIA protocols that we have to follow. Uh, so they went through, I think they did a wonderful job, uh, game planning for those overall. Uh, you'll then see on the document that they had to drill down into each individual sport, uh, because things are a little different for each. The WIA had a little bit different rules for each. Um, some are a little bit more intense than others, uh, and that may deal with or be related to, uh, the particular sport that we're looking at there. Um, and the, uh, the tendency for there to be additional, uh, physical contact or not. Uh, so as, as with this, uh, blended model, um, what you have in front of you here is the when uh, content. When we bring student athletes back, these are the things that we will follow in order to make sure that our children are as safe as possible, um, when competing in athletics. Uh, the date specific for us, uh, right now is January 4th, uh, would be our return. Um, right now we do have that pending, as does Manitowoc and Sheboygan, um, a return to blended learning. Uh, so that's the platform that we bring to you. Uh, both the when they would return, the basis for which they would return, and when they return, um, how they would successfully practice and compete, um, in the safest, uh, manner possible. So with that, Tim and I are available for questions. I know Vicky's still online here too, and she's been, um, involved in these conversations also. So we're more than happy to entertain questions that you have.
Uh, Tim, real quick question first. I've got a, a bunch of different questions, but I'd want to jump in with this one. Um, is it true, maybe for all of our sports, um, or maybe it's just basketball, that east and west are in different conferences than Preble and Southwest? And, and does that, is the Bay Conference doing something different than FRCC?
Yes, uh, east to western of Bay Conference and Preble and Southwest are in the FRCC. Uh, yes, they do different things, uh, in the fall. The Bay Conference had a fall season. The FRCC as a whole decided to go towards, uh, the spring. Uh, so that was one major difference in the fall. Uh, for the most part, uh, when we looked as a group at, uh, the different protocols between the two different conferences, they're very, very similar. Not, not a whole lot of difference. Um, some of the differences might be where one school, um, is requiring masks, even when the governor's mandate might be over. Another district or, or another school, um, says that you can be, when you're exertion, you do not have to wear a mask. Uh, so that might be a difference, um, between the different school districts.
Go ahead, Don.
So is this for all extracurricular? Are we looking at, um, our music students or is this just for sports?
This is specifically for athletics at this point in time.
Okay.
And, and just to answer that, yes, right now it's just for sports, but we have, we know that show choir is out there. We know other activities are, are there. Um, and we are, we will work with those advisors when those times come.
Do we have the coaches available? And.
The coaches to, to ask questions to hear?
Well, no, no. I mean, are, have we talked to our coaches? Is, is everybody on board with doing this?
We have not, uh, specifically asked. Um, we have, uh, there are some that, uh, that are very gung ho and want to start to, you know, yesterday. And, uh, we, um, but no one has reached out to any of the A.D.s um, about, uh, the winter sports at this time, about they're not going to come back.
Uh, Rhonda, did I see your hand?
You did. Thank you. Um, I have a few questions. And can you clarify that Appleton Public School, Oshkosh Public School, Fond du Lac County, Nina, Kimberly Minasha, that those schools in Fond du Lac, Bayport, Eschbornon, Notre Dame, Plasky, DePere, West DePere, Seymour and Luxembourg, Casco, as well as NEW Lutheran are all going to participate in winter sports?
I can't confirm all of those. Uh, I, I'm not sure about all those, but the, the majority of the schools that you have mentioned, yes, they started.
Okay. It was sent to me and I just wanted to know if that was something you could confirm. Is the district amenable if for some reason the hybrid model becomes live, right? This is what we're in. Knowing that a lot of those grades can't be in school, are you amenable to actually having those grade levels be able to participate in co-curricular extracurricular activities?
Yes, that's the plan. If we were to move from the offsite to the blended model, we would have extra and co-curricular, uh, activities available for all students in all grade levels.
So, okay, so is that, excuse me, is one contingent on the other or they come together? Is what, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Right now, we're, uh, what we have said and Manitowoc and Sheboygan, uh, have said is that, uh, we would do, uh, our extra and co-curriculars um, when we were in the blended model. So that, that would be our gate for, uh, athletics and extracurriculars.
So the only way that the January 4th date has any teeth is if we're in a blended more than likely hybrid model because the cohort really isn't anything. So is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's the gate that we set and that we would recommend. Um, certainly as a board, you have a chance to discuss that and determine whether that's a reasonable gate or whether you'd like to make another choice there.
So it is entirely possible that the board itself could allow for winter sports, even if the numbers in the community don't dictate something that's, that the gating criteria allows us to move forward with.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, is the district open if for some reason there's, the, the vote doesn't go for winter sports? There's, the vote doesn't go for winter sports. Is the district amenable to having practices or workouts? Without competition?
So I presume I'm making an inference here, but you're thinking if winter sports weren't to go on January 4th, would we allow practices to start at that point in time?
Practices, workouts, just activities, getting kids off their, you know, chair, off their couch, getting them out there.
Certainly as a board, that, that's a choice you can make, absolutely.
So the district doesn't have a position on that?
Well, again, our recommendation is that, that we would tie our participation in extracurricular and athletics. To being in a blended model, that's the recommendation we would make.
So that's your, that's your position, that's where you'd like, okay. Okay, so when would the board? I'm assuming after this meeting, we'll hear from the public, but. So. Basically, we would have to take. Your recommendation, our feedback. And somehow at that meeting, we have to determine then. If we're going forward with your recommendation, or we're going to pare it down and do something else, okay?
That's correct, we're to put it on the December 14th agenda, so you have the opportunity to make that choice.
Okay. I don't believe that's happened the whole time I've been here, but. But I, it's, I'm happy to know the parameters. Because I know I'll be asked that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew. You're on mute, sorry.
Sorry, I lost my headset, so I have to switch to speaker, this probably isn't as. As good, and I, I look forward to hearing more community input about this, but. I hope there isn't a whole lot of. I mean, okay, so January 4th. And reaching a hybrid criteria metric of. Of a 14 day trailing 100 when we're at well over 1,000. Those are. I would say pretty darn close to mutually exclusive, I, I think it's all, I've looked at, I've looked at places, how. Places that did get their act together and communities and states that. Actually tried and to get this COVID under control. And it's. You can drop 80% in, in three weeks. But dropping 80% isn't, isn't enough, so. Realize that. If, if the threshold is to get to 100 cases, we might as well. Not be talking about starting on Jan, I'm not saying that's my position, I'm saying that there, we are not going to be at 100 by January 4th. There's just no, there's just no way we're too, we're too high, I also didn't support. 100, I supported a more moderate. Metric that is still, I think, pretty safe, but. I don't even know if we get to, I don't know if we'd even get to 200, I think there's some differences between. Co-curriculars where you can have more control over the situation and it's volunteering. I think that is a, that is a different. Situation than a classroom where you're. It's not volunteering, they're all in there together, so. Yeah.
Tim, I have another question for you, so one of the reasons why we weren't in this position in the fall is because. WIA gave a choice, they said, if you want to play your sport, play your sport, and if you want to push it back to the spring, and I know there were some gymnastics around. Gymnastics is probably a bad word to use when we're talking about sports. There was a lot of modifications to say, hey, you can play your season in the spring, and so. We weren't, we weren't hearing from football players, we weren't hearing from volleyball players, soccer players. And their families because they were, they're going to get their experience in the spring. Is it simply just because there's not enough time? Was there any discussion from the WIA around trying to move the, the basketball, wrestling, other, you know, hockey? Or is it just simply no room on the calendar, so it's either now or canceled?
You're correct, there is no room on the calendar, they've already moved the spring season to the end of June. To accommodate the. Alternate fall season, and they shortened up the, the, the. Winter and the spring season by a week or two to accommodate, so there was no room for an extra season to put in there, so. In essence, this is the winter season, there is no alternative.
Go ahead, Christina.
Tim, do you know if the other districts that are moving forward with their winter sports have some type of testing? Contact case tracing protocol for their student athletes, that's like, you know, almost, you know, similar to what we're seeing in. College sports and so forth?
I've been in contact with Bellin a, about that. Other districts have been looking at, at doing those type of things. From my understanding is that there, that there, the protocols for the medical community are a couple of weeks away from even. Starting that.
Okay.
There are still things that they're looking at, it's could be that rapid response is, you know, I think that's what that U of U GB has right now. Those are the tests they're looking at doing. But they're. They're, they're only doing it once a week, from my understanding, the other schools are only doing it once a week. And it doesn't catch everything. So it might catch you on that Monday, but when you roll around a Thursday or Friday. You know, it's, it's a. It's probably a. Help for the beginning of the week, but not the end of the week.
Right.
My understanding.
Their recommendation is if you really want to do rapid antigen testing, which is what you've seen in the NFL, the NBA, Major League Baseball, is they're literally doing it every day, and in some cases more often than once a day. And the problem is, we just simply don't have the capacity. In the testing infrastructure to absorb that many tests right now. You could if you were the Big Ten, but we're not the Big Ten, so that's a problem for us.
Right, but it speaks to the issue of testing and contact tracing as a way to get back to some, some resemblance of normalcy. We don't have that right now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Can I just piggyback off that, please?
Yeah.
Do other districts have that right now?
No, right now, there are some districts that are doing testing, but as Tim said, those that are trying, giving it a try are doing it once a week. And I know, Tim and I have both been in contact with Bellin, and we just had a couple of other people sit on a meeting this evening during our call session. With DHS from Wisconsin, and, and Tim did a great job explaining it, the problem is. Rapid antigen test is. I literally needs to be done daily, if that's the test you're going to use to determine whether or not kids are safe to play. And nobody has the ability to do that, right?
And, right, yep, I heard that for sure. But somehow they are still moving forward, correct?
Right, they're just choosing to move forward with limited information.
Right. Did they, did they explain? Or were they, you know, what was their explanation for that? They don't have the, the testing capacity they would like to have. But. Like, what did they?
Want to get the kids back out of the court?
So they, so they basically took and weighed. Yep.
These are, these are all. Every one of these choices is about making compromises. Right? We know what the ideal is. I mean. We know why Wisconsin doesn't look like New York or some of these other places right now. Because we are making choices. The choices we are making is we would like life to go on as if, as if this was February 2019. We want to go out for a fish fry on Friday night, we want to go to the mall, we're making those choices. Those choices. Wind up with an increase in our community spread and the burden rate in the Midwest does not look like the rest of the country. So those are choices that we make.
That's an important point, right? I mean, and that is something that. For people out there who are. Clamoring to get back in some capacity, whether it's sports or into school. Can you say? But you are making choices that will help us move forward to that point. I'm not a fan of shaming people into that position, but I think it's a fair question. And I'm hoping that. They're doing some soul searching over the holidays, listening to this, thinking. There are people who do want to see this happen. Right? And that you do have to be able to answer that question. But you are in fact doing something. Making those choices. I still see so many people in the bars every weekend. No masks. It's not rocket science, so that, that's hard, that's hard to see.
Go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, and Rhonda, I think too, as you were saying that, I think that's what makes this so difficult, right, for everyone sitting here. And everyone in our community and across the state, because as we make different decisions, or we try to make different decisions. For all of the things that we know, and yet, you know, the hospital association is saying we're on the brink of catastrophe, I mean, we have a thousand deaths in three, in the past three weeks. You know, we're, we're also entering the holidays where people are flying. And spending time with family, even though they have been encouraged not to, and then going into the holiday season. So to assume that there will be another significant spike in the coming weeks, I think is. You know, reasonable to, to assume. And so. For us, right, I think in, in all of our minds, and I, I don't want to speak for y'all, but at least for me, it's how did the decisions that we make. Or not make contribute or not contribute to our current reality of where our hospital system is, right, and into the current community spread, and if it's. But it's already where it is. Um. It just makes it really, just makes it really difficult to know, and especially with the holidays, I, I, I think it's just going to get worse.
Technically, I believe you're safer to fly than to go to a bar. And drink for three hours and watch a game and yell and laugh and scream all over people, I do believe that, because it's more of a controlled environment. But obviously not flying at all is better, but. I'm just saying, I think you see people doing. Everything as if nothing's going on, and I. I can recognize and I know that that's not helping, so. You just hold, recognize it as well.
Go ahead, Noah.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, I have a question, so. Let's say after, sometime after, I don't like the hypotheticals, but let's say sometime after January 4th, we did the hybrid model, we. I don't know, we got it, we got the Christmas miracle and we came back. So would the, would the sports continue? Like, would we just pick up halfway through, or kind of how would that work?
That's a really good question, and, and that's one of the challenges that we have, because. If we don't start practice, we've got a minimum window that kids have to practice before they're allowed to compete. So if we don't get practice started, that window before the WIA tournaments is already pretty limited. And so that could be an enormous challenge for us, so that is definitely something that, that, that we've had a conversation about. Tim, you're more than welcome to jump in here, but. That, that's something that. We. If it, unless that Christmas miracle, as you described it, unless that happens relatively shortly, so that we know, we're talking January 5th, 6th, 7th. We wind up running into an enormous problem, because we've got to have an eight to 11 day window of practice before we can compete. And we're going to run into the tournament season.
So I'll, I'll just jump in here without seeing a lot of other questions and just kind of give some insight into my thinking on this, so. Really wrestling with, with where this is at, I've, I've had contact with coaches, I've had contact with parents, I've had contact with, with athletes. When I sit here, you know, with my school board perspective and seeing where we're at in our community, this, the spread is high, people want to just continue to live their lives. You know, I think this falls into that category. You're right, I mean, our, our community has made choices that has put us in this position. And, you know, it, it's just kind of more of wanting to do things the way that they've always done them. You know. I, I don't like the message that it sends that we, we allow athletes to participate, but we don't allow kids to go back to school. You know. It's all a part of it, we know athletics are important to kids, extracurriculars are important, academics, it's, it's all important, and so I, I don't want to get into a, a situation where we're debating what's more important. But I, again, I think that if we talk about sports, then, then we talk about the music students, and we talk about the theater students, and we talk about. Certainly all of the other sports, it's not just about one sport, so this opens up a, a big precedent for, for bringing kids back. So all that being said, I, I also have a hard time separating, you know, what it's like to be a high school athlete and, and those experiences, and. Can't imagine what it would have been like if someone would have come to me my senior year and said that I, I can't play basketball, especially when. My peers just down the road are being able to play, it's unfathomable, and if I was in that situation, I, I would do anything I could to play. And have that experience, so. You know, much like all of the other things that we've talked about regarding this situation, it, it's all terrible, there, there's no solution that's really great. The other thing that I, I want to mention is that there are students in our school district who are in a situation where. Their winter sport is, is their primary motivator, they're engaged in school, they're, they're trying to do their best because they want to stay on. The basketball team, or they want to continue to wrestle, or they want to swim, or, or they want to be in the play, they, that's their. You know, motivation, and I fear that if, if we were to cancel this, that, that. There's going to be students who, who walk away and then say that they're done, and so. There's, I, I've thought in circles on this, I've reached out to, to my personal connections to help me think through it. There are no good options, there's no good message that any of it sends, and. I feel when the, when the parents call and say, you know, I, I can't imagine my kid missing their senior year, and I can't imagine them, them missing out on these experiences that they've been working since they were in third grade. You know, living for their senior year in their sport. And at the same time, we're in a global pandemic, and our community is one of the worst places in the country, and. So i- it, it's all really difficult, and I, I can't say that I've. Come to a place where, where I have a, a strong, a strong feeling one way or the other, I. Need to continue to think on it. So that's just where I'm at. Go ahead, Christina.
Just a question, Steve, and. If, if this is getting too far ahead, you can, you know, we can. Pause, but, you know, when we, a few months ago, when we were had teachers in the buildings, and there was an opportunity for staff to apply for a waiver, or whatever we were calling it, to do. Face-to-face interaction, right? Is that something that the? That you all have talked about with, with non-sport related activities such as theater or these other. Activities that students engage in that we might be able to do safely, social distance with smaller groups?
All right, I gotta plug my thing in.
So we would use, are you thinking using a. A, that same kind of, so we have an application process that. Say the Bridges Construction Program went through to be onsite, so the question is. Have we considered using that same application process for extracurriculars?
Yeah, sorry, that was a much shorter way of asking.
No, that's all right, I just wanted to make sure I was framing it right. We haven't, yeah, no, that's a, that's a really good question, we haven't yet. We've, we've been treating extraco, extracurriculars in athletics. As contingent on. And, and not as equivalent to, so we haven't done that at this time. Doesn't mean we couldn't do it moving forward, we just haven't done it right now.
I, I, I think I would be interested to know from my fellow board members if, and, and this is different than sports, right, and I know we're talking sports specifically, but moving forward, if there would be an interest in exploring that. Application waiver process for things like theater and, you know. Art class, I don't know, I'm. Been on this meeting for a very long time, my brain is starting to turn to mush, but you know where I'm going with this, I think it could be an opportunity if we were interested in that.
I can certainly take that to the team, I haven't gotten any feedback on that at all yet, but I can certainly do that. Keep in mind that if we use that same protocol, because health and safety is, is probably the. One of the preeminent components of that matrix from determining whether or not. Those courses can come. Um, one of the preeminent components of that uh, matrix from determining whether or not um, those courses can come back. I, we are far more likely to be able to do that with co and extracurriculars than we would be with athletics. Just because of the physical distance.
Makes sense, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Think about wrestling versus. The, the chess club or the school play or something.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve or Tim around extracurriculars? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, Steve, what do you think about how this is going to come back to us? Um, any idea about what that's going to look like in a motion?
No, I don't. That's a good question. I have not drafted anything yet.
Uh.
What would you like it to look like in a motion?
So. The idea is that in order for, because obviously you want us to choose an academic model. And then you want us to pair that with. The co-curricular decision as well, or is it two separate motions or?
I think it'd be two separate motions. We, we look at the, and actually you'd have multiple motions. Because one motion is going to be for um, uh, the hybrid model. One motion will be for the gating criteria and then one motion would be for athletics.
I'm concerned about how we're going to. I'm just picturing the emails, holy crap. Ugh, wow, um, and that it's clear that. If we're not in a blended model. Sports and co-curriculars won't happen. Right?
Uh, under the motion that we would bring to you, yes, not necessarily the motion you would pass, but under the motion we would bring.
That's, okay. Uh. And that it is, they are. They are mutually exclu, or, or they are mutually exclusive. They're not, right? Okay. I'm, yeah.
Yeah, there, there'll probably be substantial debate and amendments, I would, I would think.
I'm frozen. I'm frozen.
That's one thing that we have done in the past where it, it really is the board's decision is we don't make a recommended motion and. And you make the motion based on what, you know, you believe there's going to be a considerable amount of amendments. It might just be easier that someone from the board make the original motion.
Okay, well, time to, time to think about that. Um, you know, the, the, the other thing I just want to point out is that, you know, it, it's uh. Leadership is hard, right? And uh, to, to stand here. You know, and make the decision that's different than a majority of, of boards around us that, that have said, yeah, they can go back and play. You know, even if they're not in school, right? So that's the decision that Appleton made. Uh, most of the districts around us that we, that we've pointed to. I also have to point out that. We live in a society, we live in a culture that values sports uh, amongst all other things. Um, in, in some cases in an inappropriate way. I mean, we see a, a football player in, in a game yesterday who fumbles the ball and then receives death threats. Um, we live in a society that says, there, there's a good portion of people who sports, you know, said, I don't care if schools are, are open or not. Just let my kid play basketball or let my kid wrestle. Um, a- and that's, that's people's view in our society. And we can argue that and people can, you know, say that they don't agree with that, but that's a position that a majority of people take. And uh, that's an underlying factor here that uh, we can't overlook. And, and it can be disappointing in a lot of different ways, but that's the lens that people are looking at this issue and, and expecting us to make our decision on. Go ahead, Andrew.
It's also fully voluntary. So there is, right, so if I'm deciding as a parent about. My family and my kid and what's going on with COVID in the community, I mean, that's. That's my decision as a parent, if the sport or the extracurricular is a, is a good thing to do. It's, that's different than me opting in or out of in person. Well, that's still, it's still real important that we're offering our families that. Right? There, I'm choosing between a, a plan A and a plan B option. For my kid for their education. So. Uh, everyone will be put into the spot of making that decision about returning to school or not. If we ever get back to a hybrid criteria. But I think the, the voluntary nature of, of the. Of sports and activities makes it easier for me to be okay with that. When I still prefer a relatively. I mean, I don't know, two, two hundred, you know, what, what I support, which is two hundred, I might have stumbled on the perfect number that, that. Everybody hates. It's too loose for the people who want to say close and it's too tight for the people who want to go back. But. So be it. Um, but I think there is some room for voluntary activities to um, to be different. And I, you know, I did, I did appreciate reading the, you know, reading through that report. There's a lot of rules in there for, for sports. And that could also be applied to activity. There's tight rules in there that probably wouldn't be able to be as tight in a, in a classroom situation.
Uh, Brenda and then Christina.
Speaking of voluntary, um, are, are our coaches um, going to be completely voluntary? Whether they want to do this or not? I mean, or do we already know they're all, um, all of them are gung ho? Or will we end up having to um, replace coaches who, or temporarily replace coaches who are uncomfortable coaching?
We, we could be in a position where a coach chooses to resign and then we'll have to fill that seat.
Do you know, uh, Tim, do you know what the general consensus is amongst the coaches?
Not, no, not now at the lower levels. Most of the varsity coaches are ready to go. Um, we have given the option of. Um, taking a one-year hiatus without losing your position. Um, we've done that with our virtual activities proposal. And that we're part of uh, the coaching. So if there's someone that um, just can't do it. Due to health reasons or what have you, and they want to take this year off, they could and still retain their position for next year.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen in our area some pretty high-profile coaches. Um, I think girls' basketball specifically in two districts. That I can name where the coach said, you know, cited COVID as a reason and stepped down, so. Okay, um, any other questions for Tim or Steve?
So if I could just say thank you uh, as uh, on behalf of the, the administrative team and, and. I, our, our whole crew, I, it's been a long night. Um, but you've engaged in some. I, very intense and deep conversation and dialogue. That's what this process requires. Uh, I think we've made it perfectly clear as we went through, no ideal uh, answers, no perfect choices. Everything requires a compromise. Some of those compromises are really, really difficult to make. Um, whether it's some children not in specific grade levels in order to keep other kids safe. I, or kids in or out of, of co-extracurriculars and athletics. Um, I wish I had the answer for you. Um, and, and we simply don't have that. We have, we have the best that we can provide, given the research that we've done and the, the collective work of the team. Uh, again, I want to commend to you the work that these, these uh, groups have put in over the last couple of months. Um, I can tell you that they struggled with it. Uh, there were a couple of points where things just came to a head and we had to sit down collectively as a group. Um, and, and rejoin and, and reconfigure uh, our expectations. Um, it has not been easy for us either. Uh, we will take the feedback that you've given us. Um, we may make some changes. We'll bring that back to you uh, on the fourteenth. Uh, as Melissa suggested, uh, we'll have motions for you if those plans are amenable. Um, if they're not, I, as she said, you know, the floor is open to you uh, as a board. Reflecting uh, your perception of the will of the community um, to make alternate motions. Um, more than anything else, please know I, that, that uh, we love our kids. We believe in our kids. We love our staff. We believe in them. I, and, and we will do. Um, what we need to do uh, to make what you choose as the right course for the community. Work for our school this way. So I just want you to know that as we go into this. Um, and, and I appreciate your willingness to be a part of this dialogue and to recognize that, that this is hard.
Steve?
Yes?
Um, can you just, I forgot to ask this, can you relay, are you working with um. Any mental health professionals or medical, other medical professionals in order to bring something to us?
As a matter of fact, uh, like I said during the close session today, I, I had uh, Kristen Johnson and Lori Blakesley were on with Bellon. Um, as, as they were looking at that. So we're constantly engaging with those folks to try to better understand. This because the process is changing so rapidly and we want to make sure that, that we know what the latest uh, opportunities are for us. Um, so they don't miss something.
Well, and frankly, so is the CDC recommendations, along with Dr. Fauci, right? So we're hearing.
Dr. Redfield appears to be at odds with Dr. Fauci some days, so we're struggling trying to figure out which one of those two we ought to be listening to.
There's, but I do believe they're shifting their. They're shifting their focus because the pandemic is moving forward and things are evolving and they're seeing things that they didn't see before. So I can assume that that's some of it, but.
And we may see some changes in the next three weeks. And if we do, you know, rest assured that, that will be part of our, our process as we come forward.
Thank you.
All right, Christina.
Steve, thank you for that, um, that uh, comment. I thank you to your team for the work that you do. I know you all bring it. You work on it and you bring it forward and we pick it apart. And uh, I know that that's difficult when you spend that much time, you know. Analyzing something to bring us up, to bring something forward, but that's the work. And um, I just want. Everyone on the board that serves with me to know that I'm also grateful for you because I know that this is extremely difficult. And we're all tired and we're all experiencing our own personal struggles and how we're dealing with this in our own families. And, you know, none of us signed up for this. We didn't think when we decided to be on the school board that we'd be leading at a time like this. But I'm really grateful for you that you each come here and prepared and you do the hard work. Cause I, and I don't say this because we all agree, um, but I really am honored to be able to serve with each of you. So thank you.
All right. Any final comments? Otherwise I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
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 Opposed? All right, ten fifty-five, that adjourns tonight's work session. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good break.
Thanks, you too.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.